Trustee Andrews.
Here.
Trustee Capel.
Here.
Trustee Khan.
Here.
And I'm here. We are only four today, which is down one, but by the end of the meeting, we'll be back up to five. So I know we've got a lot of people who are in the meeting today. So if you could all help me out a whole bunch, if you're not either a trustee or presenting to the board, go ahead and turn your video and your audio off. And then it'll, it'll keep it a little bit cleaner for our, for our live stream to YouTube. Thank you so much. Okay. We've got a heck of a meeting tonight. We've got a 203-page packet. So I hope everybody feels like they really fulfilled their summer reading goals just by doing tonight's packet. We're going to jump right in and I will ask first for any approval or reordering of agenda items. Do we have a motion to reorder anything? No? Okay. I'll make one note just to everybody. In your packet, there is just a sort of a weird order thing. For item L, which is our trustee election item, there is a memo on that, starting on page 187. And then on page 163 of your packet are the list of the questions that candidates will be asked. So that's just in the middle of their resolutions. It looks like it just got out of order somehow. But just in case anybody is looking for the questions that we're going to be asking our candidates, that does appear on page 163 and that goes with item L. So just be aware of that. We'll talk about it again when we get there, but just in case anybody's keeping track at home. All right. So that being said, I'd like to ask for a motion to go ahead and adapt the agenda.
So move.
Perfect.
My second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Great. All those in favor will do a roll call vote. Trustee Andrews.
Yes, hi.
Trustee Capel.
Hi.
Trustee Khan.
Hi.
And that's an I for me. So the agenda is adapted. That brings us to item D, public comment on non-agenda items. And I believe we have Mr. Mills on the line to give a public comment. Yes, Greg, can you, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Also, they can hear me fine. Again, thank you, Chair and trustees, the Altadena libraries. I'm, my name is Greg Mills. I am a candidate for the California Special District Association, CTC. I think that you've received a packet, I hope you have, that Chloe or someone else has at the district there. And that you've had a packet which contains four different candidates. I want to talk about myself. I'd like to, of course, be able to run your support if I possibly could. Briefly, I pledge to be actively engaged with the CSDA, come back to you with any information and updates on a very timely basis to educate all of us and also to make sure that we are getting the proper support. And, and also to be on the lookout for different types of legislation and rules and regulations which will impact local control of our local agencies. I prefer to keep all of our local agencies under local control. I think that's the best way to better serve all of our ratepayers and patrons within each district. As this was like first time that they water district, I'm the vice president there for the last three years. I've been the mayor, mayor pro Tema, Villa Park, California. I've been on the sanitation district for two years, three years on the mosquito and vector control. And my background is as an engineer for the pharmaceutical industry and semiconductor industry. And I have a lot of experience with two types of processes, especially with water and also chemicals and the proper maintenance of those for, for, you know, high, high-tech products. I also, of course, I'm involved with Rotary for 25 years, the Elks for the past eight years. And, you know, I was the chair of the Villa Park Family Picnic at Irvine Lake for three years. So I had a lot of different types of interactions and my family overall, we've done this all our lives. I don't want to take up too much of your time, but I, of course, I'm in a lot of professional societies such as American Chemical Society, International Society of Pharmaceutical Engineers, also Print and Drug Association, American Vacuum Society, et cetera. And I have a master's degree in engineering management and a bachelor's in chemistry. I would like to entertain any questions you may have for me. But again, my main message is that we want to maintain a very active dialogue with each agency. From the CSDA, there's things that need to be improved, of course, and keep you well apprised of, of different events and also legislation and rules that can affect your being, your authority for the library district that you've taken so well care of. Again, are there any questions for me? Again, my name's Greg Mills.
Right. Thank you so much, Mr. Mills.
Did you, have you received the packet from CSDA? Can you confirm that?
We have received it, yeah. And this is, I think, a good reminder. Oh, sorry, that's my three-minute timer. I think this is a good reminder that we need to put this on our, a future agenda before the, before the deadline.
The only trouble is maybe, when is your, your next meeting is past July 10th?
It may or may not be. We're going to discuss that a little bit later. We may have a meeting before that, but.
Okay. Well, you know, you know, it's because, you know, sometimes we have special meetings, but the, the voting ends at 5:00 PM on July 10th. And it's open now anytime. Okay? Thank you so much for y'all for your time, Chair and trustees. Chloe, thank you for returning my calls. And hopefully you have a good, good rest of your meeting.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So at this time, I'd like to go ahead and hand it to Nikki for just a second to introduce the folks that we have here from Coffin Associates tonight.
Good evening, everyone. As I have mentioned to the board over the past couple of months that we've been doing the classification and compensation study, working with Coffin Associates. For number one, thank you to the board for selecting them. They've been an absolute dream and gone above and beyond. Anything that Nicole and I asked to amend or change or fix, they happily did it. And I think the process went very smoothly as a result. Amazingly, we did most of this from our dining room tables, you know, so. So tonight we have Mike Harari and Gayor Kramer. Both, let them introduce themselves and the roles that they played with Coffin Associates. But thank you to both of them for presenting tonight and for being so wonderful to work with.
Thank you, Nikki, and ditto. Greetings, fellow, greetings, honorable board members. Thank you for having us this evening to provide basically a brief presentation regarding the comprehensive classification and compensation study that we recently completed for the entire Altadena Library District staff. There is a power, before I go, I was the project manager from Coffin Associates project. And Gayor Kramer is also on the line. He is the executive director. Your official title of president or chief executive officer, basically the head of the company. So he's, along with I, we're very involved and instrumental working with Nikki, Nicole, and some of the other staff there. That was not my dog barking, just for the, for the record, although she may. Anyway, I was wondering, does Nikki have that PowerPoint available to, to load or share as part of this presentation?
Oh, we do have it.
Was it in the email? Or you had emailed it over?
I can find it.
If, if not, Nikki, I have it ready to go if you want me to share my screen.
If you could, that'd be great.
Sure. Let's hope that this works. So bear with me here. Good evening, everybody. By the way, this is Gayor Kramer here. And I'm going to go into the presentation mode here. Hopefully that'll come through. There it is. Can everybody see that? Great. All right. Moving right along then.
Okay. Thank you, boss. So the, tonight's agenda, real quick, again, we didn't want to spend too much time on, on this presentation because we know we have a very heavy agenda packet and we don't want to. But we're here. If you have any questions at any time during the presentation, please feel free to let us know or ask. We'll be happy to try to answer all of those to the best of our ability. The, the agenda really is a bit of an introduction of, of, of what our purpose and our role was with respect to the studies that the district has selected us to perform. We'll talk a little bit more about the classification study and the process that was involved with that for the district employees, the compensation study that was also provided to the director regarding all of the benchmark positions at the district and overall recommendations with respect to both classification and compensation. So a brief introduction was the, the district did select our firm towards the end of 2019. And we actually kicked off the study the middle of January by meeting and discussing the goals and, and objectives from district staff for both pieces, classification and compensation for the district. And we determined through that, through that meeting with, with your management team was that the district was interested in not only reviewing, but also updating and creating, in some cases, new job descriptions and ensuring that employee classifications were relevant and accurate and also met industry standards and best practices for what we believe would be the most appropriate classifications within a library district such as yours. And we also talked about the, the salary piece or compensation piece of the study, which was an analysis of base salaries, not total compensation. We did not include benefits and things of that nature, but a base salary study of the market to determine where Altadena positions were paid relative to the labor, your labor market, and also to make some recommendations with regard to salary ranges for ALD positions. And part, part of the reason we want to do this is to at least provide the, the board and staff of an idea as to how competitive these salaries are between ALD and other similar agencies with library programs and library departments. So to recognize the value of staff, both, both from an external labor market value as well as internal value within the organization. So we'll talk briefly about the classification study. This was our methodology in a nutshell, and these things did take some time. So we did kick things off, I think, in February and, and wrap things up, I believe, in May. We met with the project team, as I had mentioned earlier, that was Nikki and Nicole and some other staff. We've also, were actually onsite before COVID and conducted orientation meetings with the employees, basically letting the employees know what the process was all about, why we were there, and give, gave them an opportunity to ask questions in terms of the entire study. We then went ahead and distributed a PDQ, which is a comprehensive position description questionnaire, which is the document that we had asked everybody to complete that wanted to participate in the study. And this is the, basically the questionnaire that we use in all of our classification studies. It's a very common tool in order to find out more about everyone's position, their job duties, the purpose of their job, and things like qualifications in terms of education, experience, skills, knowledge and abilities, things of that nature. So we distributed those, those went back to the management team and we received those and reviewed them. Then we came back onsite, believe it or not, just a couple of days before everything was shut down. I would say the middle of March, I think we're the last, you might have been the last client we actually visited onsite to conduct interviews with your employees and management and supervisory staff. So we conducted those interviews, trying to gather more information regarding the employee jobs and duties and things that were indicated on the PDQ, and just to have a face-to-face dialogue with employees to get more information and also give them an opportunity to ask questions about the process one-on-one. And we went back, then we developed some draft classification concepts. And we chatted with management, your, your district director, on, on those concepts and recommended classification changes. And also we started to develop basically updated job descriptions for the entire team, for all the employees at the, at the district. Then we distributed those classification descriptions to the employees and supervisors for review. We received some feedback and we incorporated some of that feedback into the final documents, which I believe were attached to your packet this evening. Basically, the updated classification descriptions for all positions from district director on down for the, for the library district. Okay? Here are some kind of big picture overall results that we encountered or we are recommending as, as per the classification study. And this is also in your packet. I believe this is part of the classification study report. There were eight title changes made for district employee, or district positions to more clearly reflect the scope and level of work that they're performing and consistent with other library districts in your labor market. For example, the library page was retitled to library A to better reflect the duties that these individuals are doing at the district in comparison with the duties that are comparable with other libraries. And then we also came up with eight reclassifications. That's actually moving people from their current class to either a classification at a higher level, a lower level, or lateral level to recognize their responsibility and scope of work. And one of the examples we had there was a library clerk two being reclassified to library assistant based upon the, the body of work that those, that that particular individual was performing, which was more consistent with programming that you would find if the library assistant versus traditional clerical work. And the last bullet there says one new classification. And although you did have this librarian, a professional librarian classification is, is pretty rarely utilized within the Altadena Library District, which is a little unique in terms of what other, we find at other districts or other cities that have their own library department, which is more of a heavy emphasis on professional librarian, you know, to, they're deploying these professional librarians to deliver services. And while you had, I think you had one incumbent at that librarian level, we kind of beefed up and redefined what a librarian would look like with the new job description. Okay? So that was it on classification. And if you have any questions, feel free to pop in. If not, we'll move forward to compensation. And any questions you have towards the end, we'll be happy to answer. So the survey element, this has to do with the compensation piece. There are three elements that we traditionally want to consider before we go ahead and launch a salary survey. The first was comparator agencies, which we did work with Nikki, and I believe she may have bounced those off the board for feedback. These would be the agencies that we would utilize to compare Altadena salaries against the labor market. And we have a list of those in just a slide or two. The next element that we needed to consider, which is, or was, which are the benchmark classifications? I.e., which are the most common classifications? We believe we would go out to the market and find common matches to make, you know, to make effective salary recommendations for Altadena positions. Which ones will we think we would find in the market? Which ones did we find in the market? And which ones are really comparable based upon our methodology? Benefits data didn't really apply to this, but that would be another element that we typically utilize for a total, if we were to do a total compensation study versus a base salary study. So these are the comparator agencies. There are 12 agencies that we utilize. Again, these came, I believe, through the board, through, through Nikki. And hopefully there's no surprises from the board at this stage of the game because obviously we completed the study. But you can see, we looked at regional factors. We looked at, obviously, libraries or cities. You know, there's, there's a handful of special library districts, as I'm sure you're all well aware, within the region. But there's quite a few more cities and municipalities that have their own library departments. So we used a kind of a blend of library districts and municipal library departments to come up with salary data and match your positions against the labor market. So that's the list there. It was 12 of those. Excuse me. And in terms of data collection, this, we, we spent a lot of time doing this. We want to make sure that the data that we do come up with in terms of salary survey data is something that we can defend to you and to your management team. And that's, you know, as accurate as possible, given, you know, the nuances between various agencies and positions. There's not, typically don't have 100% duties matched from one agency to the next, but we try to get as close as we can. So we look at job descriptions from other agencies. We looked at MOUs or memorandum of understanding, which are, you know, collective bargaining agreements, which show salaries and, and salary schedules and upcoming raises and things of that nature. We also look at the organizational charts, you know, the hierarchical structure within those other agencies that we surveyed. And we collected salary information and we did what we call a description-to-description comparison. So if we have like a librarian at Dena, we just go and look at librarian at another agency. We looked at their job descriptions, try to compare them as best we can. We use a threshold of what's called a 70% match, which is, you know, like I said, there's not a, you typically don't find 100% match between agencies. But if we found there was about roughly 70% or higher of the duties at another agency was about 70% or higher or more similar to Altadena's position, then we would consider that an effective match for the purpose of the salary study. And then where we needed to, we would follow up with those other agencies to collect data or job descriptions or whatever was missing, so that we'd make sure we track all that information down and present it back to Nikki and ultimately the board. And here's what we found, which all this data is in your packet, also in the compensation final report, which shows the survey that we did showed that your salaries were an average of 8.3% below or behind the market median. And the range maximums, which means we were, we looked at the maximum step of salary ranges, not, not the minimum, but maximum steps between Altadena and the other maximums at other agencies, ranged from 8.7% above the market to as far down as 26% below the market median. So you have, you know, there's a little bit of a curve there. And, and this is what that data looks like in one, one slide. So these are your classifications, the new classification titles that we've come up with for the district, sorted alphabetically, right? The next column shows the current top monthly salary for each one of those classes. Next column shows the median of salaries for your comparator, comparators, or competitors, if you will, your labor market. And then we show the percent above or below that median. So you can see some of the fluctuations. There are a handful of positions that are above. There are a handful of positions that are very close. And there were a handful of positions that are, I would say significantly or somewhat significantly behind what's the median or the middle of the, of the salaries of your labor market.
All right, Mike, can I just jump in with a quick question here?
Please.
Top monthly salary, is that, and I know it's in your report, so forgive me for asking, is that the top step for each of those?
Yes, so it would be Altadena's top step.
It's whatever our top step is. Okay.
Your top step, and then the top step, that's also published by those other agencies as well.
Okay, got it.
Okay. And then the bottom line, the average that we had mentioned is about 8.3% behind the market, you know, averaging out all of those data points. So recommendations regarding, regarding salaries is that we actually have prepared a salary range schedule, which doesn't look like the district had a, a one, basically spreadsheet or one document to refer to when addressing salary issues or when compensating your employees. So we provided a salary structure, which I also believe should be in your packet, with internally aligned ranges. So there are 70 ranges from 1 to 70. And each one of those ranges from 1 to 2, 2 to 3, et cetera, has a 2.5% differential between each range. That's somewhat common in the industry that we find for our clients. There are also six steps. That would be from A, B, C, D, E, F, or 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, between steps in the range. So there are 5% increments between each step, between 1 and 2, 2 and 3, 3 and 4, et cetera. And we did create a step six, which replaces what you currently refer to as step five and a half. Okay? So now we're, we're with a, a, a more commonly utilized and very frequently utilized public sector salary range structure, compensation structure. And we created the, the range matrix by position as well. So that's also a, a, an attachment to your packet. And it basically indicates the positions that we're recommending, the range that we're recommending, tying back to each one of the Altadena positions from a salary standpoint.
And just quickly to chime in here, the, the thought process behind the six-step schedule is, was that we wanted to recognize the fact that the district currently has this step five and a half, and yet that five and a half was a little bit unusual. So we, we created this proper sort of step six with the same differential that, that's between step, step six and five, as, as all the other steps in the range. And the idea is that this step six is, is more of a sort of true performance-based, you know, almost sort of somewhat discretionary step for your executive director to use as she's making compensation decisions. And so the idea is that, and that's not, not uncommon in other agencies, is that employees would move through the range from step one through step five based on satisfactory performance, you know, meeting expectations, you know, basically, you know, showing up and doing their jobs and having good performance. Step six is, it would take, it would take a little bit of that extra effort, maybe exceeding expectations on a continuous basis and, and really providing your executive director a mechanism to really reward a performance that goes a little bit above and beyond the sort of more straightforward meeting expectations. So that's kind of the thought process behind the six-step schedules. And I think that's actually wrapping it up. Oh, I'm sorry, there's one more.
Okay, so the overall, I think this is it. The classifications that are first below the market median might be something the board wishes to consider first. That, that is those classifications that surveyed at 10% or more below the market median would be the ones that we would recommend for, for consideration if the board's intent is to compensate those positions at the median level. And positions that are closer to the median could be addressed, but closer, but, but below the market median could be addressed down the road if necessary. And positions that are actually above the market median, which would be, I think, the library protection was the only one that was above the market median. The recommendation there was to not take away salaries. We're not recommending reducing salaries, but we are recommending what's called Y-rating or freezing the salaries, which is a very common practice in, in public agencies, to their current level until such time as salaries that are below them catch up and move. So they would basically not see salary increases for quite a bit if they're 8.7%, I think, whatever they were, above the market, they would, it would take 8% worth of raises for other staff to catch up and, and then they would unfreeze their salaries, if that makes sense. So, so the idea behind freezing is not to reduce or decrease people's salaries that are in positions that are above the market, but rather to freeze them at their current rate until such time as other salaries catch up to their salary range. And we've explained this to your director and your others, some of the other staff. So that's, in, in a nutshell, we could go into more or less if you wish, but we thought we'd provide at least kind of an overview of what we've done. And we had a very, very great experience with your director and her team. It's, it's an excellent agency, in my opinion. Really appreciated working with, with the team there. And I, hopefully we'll be, we were able to provide you with a really good classification and compensation structure that the district can live for, for the years to come.
Thank you so much. And, and we really appreciate you being here with us this evening. It's a lot of work, certainly, and under not the easiest circumstances. So we appreciate not only, you know, such a, such a thorough job, but one that was completed in the timeframe we originally envisioned and, you know, brought, brought so much to the table. So thank you so much for that. I know we have some action items related to this a little bit later in the agenda, but I want to make sure we take advantage of the presence of, of our experts here. So I'd like to, at this point, open up any questions that other trustees might have.
This is Terry. And, and forgive me if you've already addressed this, you know, in your presentation. But when it comes to cost of living increases that are done, does that sort of reset all the schedules up by that percentage amount, or how does that part of them?
Good, great question. We did not factor in a cost of living that may or may not be coming to, I don't know if you have one already scheduled for the employees for July 1, for example. But we were basing those salary recommendations on, on existing salary rates, i.e. pre-July 1 rates. So if there were, if there was a cost of living to be granted to your employees district wide, that would certainly take, arguably take your positions closer to the market median. But we didn't capture whether those other agencies were granting cost of living increases in July as well. So it's, it's a little bit of a mixed bag. So if you were to grant a cost of living, you don't, if it's 2%, we don't know if your positions are going to be 2% closer to the market because other cities and libraries may be granted 2% as well.
And I.
Well, you will find, if I may real quick, if you, you will find in the detailed data spreadsheets that we did gather information from agencies, whether they are going to have a future salary increase and when that would be scheduled and what the percentage would be. So where we were able to obtain that information, we did include it in the survey, but as a separate sort of column on, on our data spreadsheet. So that information is available.
And I, I will certainly let Nikki answer this question and I hope she'll correct me if I'm wrong. But my understanding is that this year, the decision and the recommendation from, from staff is rather than granting like a 2% cost of living increase across the board to instead bring up all of the, all of the positions to at least market rate to sort of effectuate that change, so that people who are well above are not seeing an increase on top of that. It's, it's a little bit more fair way to do it. Is that right, Nikki?
That's correct. We had built in a 2%, not knowing if we would be able to grant COLA. And because of that, as well as some staff positions opening, we were able to put everybody into the recommended range. So that's built into the, the budget for next year. But there won't be a cost of living increase this year.
Great. Any other questions from trustees to our, to our guests from Coffin Associates? No? Jason?
I have a couple of questions, but I think there'd probably be more for Nikki and her team. So we can just save that to, for the action items.
Okay. My only question, and this may be something that we are in the process of developing, but I was wondering if we have an updated org chart?
Oh, we do. I can provide that.
Okay, cool. Great. Okay. Well, if there's nothing else, then, um, Mike, Eric, I'd like to thank you guys so much for joining us. We really appreciate your time and certainly I think, appreciate all the documentation. And I think we're in a much better position going forward than, than we were before we had you come in. So thank you so much for everything.
Thanks so much. Our pleasure. And thanks so much to Nikki and Nicole. They've been a wonderful team to work with. So thanks very much. Take, take care, everyone. Thank you so much.
Thanks so much.
Thanks, guys. Bye.
Thank you. Bye bye.
So like I said, we're going to come back to this in item 8A under new business. So if you've got some questions or something occurs to you, in the meantime, we'll definitely have another pass at the, the class and comp study results as well as when we talk about the budget, right? Because that's integrated there. So that being the case, at this point, I'd like to move on to item four, our consent calendar. If I could ask for, as usual, a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar, and then we can pull out any items you'd like to discuss.
I mean, I move, we approve the consent calendar?
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. At this point, if there's any discussion on any items in the consent calendar, I'd like to open up the floor for that.
I'll go ahead and start. Considering the, the weight of our agenda, I'm not going to go into everything. I just, you know, I think it's important to recognize at each of our meetings, you know, especially right now, the amount of work that our staff are still able to contribute to the community. You know, being able to open up for curbside pickup and all the preparations going into reopening the libraries. But specifically as the liaison to the, the foundation, you know, the first thing I wanted to just recognize was the, the virtual dinner that was held last week. And I know this is our first meeting without her, but specifically being able to take some time out to recognize Gwen McMullins, who not only served quite a number of years on this board, but also was a member of, of the foundation, the Library Foundation as well. So I'm glad we were able to get that into, into the reports as well.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Um, like Jason, I'm gonna bypass a lot of things that I would have loved to have said, but the, the one thing I really want to call, well, personally, I want to express so much gratitude for curbside pickup. It, it's just amazing. And I, when I went to, when I went by to pick up my, my hard copy of my packet on Friday, I actually got to go inside, you know, briefly and see, just see how that whole thing is set up with the paper bags everywhere. It's just miraculous that, that we can have access to, to the print collection again. And I'm just so grateful. The other thing I just want to call out, and I'm a little embarrassed that I didn't know that Helen Kate is getting her master's in library science. That is such an accomplishment. I'm so thrilled that, you know, she's, she's found her, her happy place in the children's department and unbeknownst to me anyway, that has been working on what I know is a very, very, very difficult thing to accomplish. So maybe Nikki, you could send our congratulations to Helen.
Yeah, I'd like to add to that. That was a comment I was going to make. So where'd it go, Helen? And I actually looked at her YouTube of reading those Greek myths and was suitably entertained. Felt like I was reading right along with her. But my general comment, because I know it is a long meeting, we've got a lot to discuss, is that as you look at all those reports, you can just see the tentacles of the library spreading throughout the community by what people are doing and the things that we're setting up. So I think it's everybody, you know, all the board members that are involved in these things, and of course the staff and Nikki. To me, those, that's not going unnoticed. I think that the library has a higher and a better profile right now than it has in, in a long time. I just wanted to make that remark.
Thank you. Like my colleagues, I will keep it brief, but I did want to note two, uh, two items beyond, of course, the success of summer reading and curbside, which I think are just phenomenal. And I'm so impressed with what staff has been able to do and sort of innovate in a very challenging time. The first thing I'd like to note specifically is the EDI team and their statement on Black Lives Matter and the position of our libraries. I think that it was very reflective, really thoughtful. And, and unlike some of the statements I've seen from not other libraries, but, you know, floating around, it was really substantive. It pointed to actual things that our library is going to do and that our organization is going to focus on. And I really appreciated that. I think those are, are real markers of action that we can take or not take. And hopefully the community can look at and, you know, hold us accountable to. So I, I just really appreciated it. I thought it was so well done and so well formed and I, I was, I was really glad to see it. The other thing that I'd like to note is just the, the real creativity out of teen services and the way in which thinking about activism and summer reading and kind of bringing all of that together. I feel like that's something that just really meets the moment that we're all in right now. And I'm, I'm thrilled to have, you know, an outlet that, for that, for our teens certainly, but also as part of our summer reading process. I think that it's, it's a particularly apt summer to be focusing on activism in all its different forms. And so big kudos across the board. And like everyone else has said, thank you so much to all of our staff for their, their invention, their creativity and their persistence in what continue to be difficult circumstances. All right. If there's no other discussion on the consent calendar, then at this time I'd like to call for a vote to approve it. We'll do a roll call vote, the motion having been made and seconded. Trustee Andrews?
Aye.
Trustee Kapal?
Aye.
Trustee Khan?
Aye.
And that's an aye for me as well. So the consent calendar is approved. All right. That brings us on to our report section, section six. So we have in your packet, uh, two reports, one from the foundation and one from the friends. Nikki, I don't believe we have anybody from the friends or foundation to address us tonight. Is that right?
Okay.
Okay. Then I think I'd just like to say certainly to thank them for their ongoing efforts. I know the foundation is undergoing an extensive sort of self-audit and assessment process. And I, I think that that is, as Bridgette said, probably somewhat painful, but really, really important. And I, I know we all look forward to the outcome of that. And then to the friends who I know are also thinking hard about how their next six, 12, 18 months are going to look in the face of the pandemic. So I want to thank both organizations for keeping us posted on, on where their thinking is. So Nikki, at this time, I'd like to hand it over to you for your report, please.
Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone. Just to mimic what everyone is saying, I'm going to keep it very short and sweet. You all got to read my report. And with my weekly updates, I'm sure you're feeling pretty updated on everything going on. I did want to say congratulations to Debbie Gieringer, who announced her retirement and that officially took effect. We are all a bit sad that we didn't get to wish her well in person and we're hoping to get her into the building at some point when we can make that happen. So we've still been in touch with her, but we wish her well and thank her for her many years of service with us. As you all know, we also had Kailin resign from her position effective May 8. And we opened that recruitment about a month ago and it closed this past Tuesday, June 16. We had, oh, I think between 25 and 40 people apply. So it was, I can't tell you exactly, but we had many qualified people. Nicole and I are going to be conducting interviews tomorrow and Wednesday and feel very confidently that we're going to get a really high quality person in that position, which I will be very excited about after putting two packages together on my own. Well, no, with the help of my team, trust me, but like, I have a huge appreciation for the work that the clerk does. In addition to that, when we posted the position, we also worked with Coffin Associates to include a volunteer coordinating aspect to the work. So I'm excited that this person's going to come on, be a true liaison to the support groups as well as help lead our system-wide volunteer services efforts. So, and one thing to point out, as Katie mentioned with our EDI team, not only did we put the statement out, but again, we laid out some action items. And one of the first things we're doing right now is looking at the interview questions from that lens as well. So, you know, everything that we do, we want to start approaching from that standpoint of EDI. Are we incorporating that in the way we're writing our policies and our procedures and how we're doing recruitments and all of that? So that's something that Nicole and I, as we develop the questions for tomorrow, definitely we're thinking about. And then we'll be incorporating into the interview. I'm still meeting with the management team every Monday. And right now what our focus is on is the guidelines for reopening to the public. As I mentioned in my report, right now we're looking at July 6, unless we hear otherwise. I have been continuing to talk to Katie every week as well on our phone calls. But, you know, either way, whether it happens July 6, we want to make sure we have really clear, detailed guidelines so that staff feel comfortable in bringing the, the public back into the library. And so everybody feels safe. Again, it's, it's a living document that we keep working on, but I feel confidently that by just opening the community room to start offering like a phase limited approach to bringing people back in, that it will help guide us to getting the rest of the building open as well as Bob Lucas. So if you have any questions, you know, feel free to let me know. Um, I also did want to point out, just in case you haven't checked out the Open Book on Location programs that we're putting on YouTube, we're doing that in partnership with the Pasadena Literary Alliance. And honestly, the two that have posted are amazing. So if you like listening to author interviews, I definitely encourage you to do that. We have at least four to six more of those coming out. And the next one, I believe, has Cornelia Funk, and I can't remember the other author, but Chloe said it was, did you say it?
Patrick Rothfuss.
She said it was so entertaining to sit through that, like to collect the content. So again, I would highly encourage you to take a look at those. And a huge thanks to Chloe for doing all the video editing and pulling those together, because they're really high quality too. I think that's about it. As you guys mentioned, our curbside statistics have been just through the roof. We continue to work with staff on finding the best way to do that. One of the things that we're looking at now is moving towards holds, not phone call. We only will let you pick up the things that are in the library. Because as we move towards reopening to the public, we think holds are the way that it's going to work best. Basically, like a person will request everything they want. Once they're ready, they can either come in and walk into the room and get it, or set up a curbside pickup. So that's about to change. But again, it will be very seamless in terms of like how the, the patron sees it happening. We want everything to be as like seamless as possible. And I think that's it for me. If you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thanks, Nikki. Any questions from anybody for Nikki?
Just a, from, from me, a comment and then a question. So I think, I'm surprised you skipped over it, Nikki, but the, your report on the interaction with our YouTube, YouTube page, YouTube page was pretty impressive. I think, you know, 308 hours for our little library district to be getting that kind of attention is, is, I think it speaks a lot to Chloe and the rest of the team who've been putting up that content. And then I also know you had a piece in there about the census and the work that we're doing in collaboration with the other groups within Altadena. I'm just wondering if there's any more you can share on that. I think, I think I speak for others that it's concerning, and I know this isn't directly our responsibility, but to see that the numbers are still so low for Southwest Pasadena. And I didn't know if there's been any conversations about specific actions we can take to try and get those numbers up.
And, and I might have Chloe speak to this too, but she's been in communication with Veronica and, and Antonio to do some type of signs, both in English and Spanish, to put up in the community about filling out the census. Cause I know Veronica's plan is to hit the ground, you know, and try to connect with people door to door, if possible, you know, with social distancing. But, you know, we want to increase awareness in those areas especially. Chloe, do you have anything to add to that?
No, just that we are going to be ordering those signs and that we'll be working with Veronica, but also the surrounding census tracts on either side, because those are also the lower numbers of Altadena right now. So our goal is at least like on every block to have some sort of signage that could remind people to respond as we can. And I've continued to reach out to town council to see if there are opportunities to help present virtually at different meetings. So we continue to reach out and those maps that you'll see too in online news publications like colorado boulevard.net, like we've worked with them to help them figure out how to make those maps so that they can provide more updated data to the community as well, which I think will help, keep, just keep it top of mind for people. So if you know of anyone specifically that wants to speak or that wants us to come present or anything, we are happy to come do that.
Okay, very cool. Good to hear.
Just out of curiosity, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah. And every, every time I present, I've talked about census and I'll continue to do that because we're trying to keep it top of mind. Yes.
Um, out of curiosity, and I, I could look this up, but I haven't. How do the current response rates compare to 2010? Because I know that, I know that those, that census tract in, in Southwest Altadena and, and the other two were some of our lower response rates tracts in 2010 as well. I'm just wondering if we're well below, kind of close to what 2010 was. Does it, do we have any idea?
Off the top of my head, I'm not sure of the specifics. I know that we are as, like, I want to say it was around, I don't know census tract specific, but I want to say that the total response rate was only in the seventies in 2010. So the fact that we are approaching, and each week that I check, we've gone up by about one percentage point per census tract. And those census tracts continue to go up higher percentage points each time than the other ones. So I think we are approaching like what the national average was at least. So I think our goal though is up into the eighties and nineties if possible, but I can double check that and get that.
Oh, no, no, of course. I'm just, I'm, I'm sort of wondering how much we can attribute, you know, pandemic to affecting those response rates versus where they were in 2010. And not that, not that we shouldn't strive for, you know, the most complete sort of statistics that we can, but it just, it would be interesting to know.
Well, and I'm not sure if this is helpful, but I know that with the internet being an option for the census this year, I believe that given that we are in the midst of a pandemic, that has lent itself to having higher response rates than maybe normal. Cause I don't even think that they've had enumerators going out in full force yet because of social distancing. So. So the fact that we're in the high sixties in parts of Altadena or seventies without even the full door-to-door process, I think speaks highly for as a nation how we'll do. But I can get those specifics from last year, too.
Yeah. No, and I think it speaks highly of the, you know, the effort that the library has made, and I know town council has made as well, to build awareness on that front. So certainly. Okay, anything else for Nikki before we move on to some of our other reports? No? Okay, perfect. Thank you, Nikki. I'm going to hand it over to Nicole for the financial reports.
Thank you. Okay, so you're looking at the financial statements for April 2020. Currently, we're at 83.3% of our budget year. Net income, again, is at negative 362. Cash equivalents are at 3.6 million. And then at the request of the board, I did add this next little section. It shows the total cash we currently have with the county and the total amount that is required to satisfy our financial policies of having six months operating expenses in reserves. So that's what those figures represent there. And then you see our total assets at the bottom. Not much revenue for April, unfortunately, because we were still closed. Just some property tax income there. And then some expenses, while we were closed, we were able to do some major projects, which was great. Another ladder installed on the roof and then some HVAC upgrades at our main location. And then you'll see some major progress billings for architecture and for COFF. Any questions, anything in the financial reports?
Anything for anybody?
No, I thought it was pretty straightforward.
Yep, I agree. Pretty, pretty straight ahead. And we've got some budget conversation coming up a little bit later. So I'm sure we'll come back to some other fiscal questions. So thank you so much, Nicole. That's perfect. All right, so we'll move into our committee reports at this time. So I'll hand it over to Terry for a report from the Budget Committee.
Okay. Thanks, Katie. So the Budget Committee met on June the 2nd, and then this was our second tweaking as a committee of the budget second session. We, the main changes here, and the numbers that I have in my report will be different still than what we see in the final version that Nicole has put into the packet today, but not by a whole lot. Suffice it to say, give you the shortcut on this, is that we balance the budget again. Our expenses will precisely match our revenues in an ideal world. And it will be about 3.954 million dollars will be the bottom line for expenses and for revenue. The big change or the biggest item to, I guess, discuss or know about was that we were drawing down from reserves to the tune of about $230,000, $230,000 at the initial meeting we had. And then that lessened to less than 200,000. And now we're down to about $189,000 is the drawdown. And thanks, Nicole, for putting in that little item on the, on your report about where we stand in terms of our reserves that we have to have by law for six months already. So that'll help us all keep an easier eye on that. The, there was a decrease in expenses, about $52,000 on equipment, furniture and fixtures. That was going to be used for, I guess, a vending machine or a CD type of a machine.
Like a DVD, yeah, like a DVD vending machine.
A little lending library, but my understanding is that Christopher has found grant money or he's pursuing grant money that might offset that expense. So that was reduced. And by the time everything came around, we'll hear more about it. We wound up with that 3.954 million dollars for both expenses and for revenue. Of course, we need to expect a little bit less money in terms of revenue next year because I'm sure our services will be impacted going into the year. There's also, of course, the prognostication that our property tax will have a little bit of a halt or a bit of a skid here going into next year. So I think, you know, my feeling is that as a committee, we gave really good oversight to the budget this year. Everybody was working hard on it and I think it came out pretty good. Any questions?
I just like to quickly comment, I was interested in this idea that we can get a discount on our insurance if only we go on Zoom even more than we already are.
Oh, you know what? Yeah, and I totally forgot to, can I just check, you know, jump in here? Okay. You're talking about the educational piece that would give us a discount going forward.
Yeah.
And I totally given that, I should have talked about that to begin with. The, if you look, I looked at the SDRMA insurance bill that we got, and they cover a lot of our stuff. And we, you know, we knew that our workers' comp insurance is going to be a lot higher than it was in years past. And the reason for that, I found out in my call, was that there was a 228% penalty that was put on sort of an overuse of the workers' comp thing. It had nothing to do with our settlement with a former director. It was all due to workers' comp. And that's a lot, and it'll go back down if we don't have any more claims over the next year or two. So that's something for us to keep an eye out on. They do have a program where they could come out and take a look at your building and make sure that all the trip and fall hazards that might be there are taken care of so that there aren't any accidents on the premises. And I know Nikki already knows about this. I'm sure they're utilizing it appropriately. Excuse me. But another chance for a discount is that if there is enough educational activity that can be demonstrated, not only at the board level, but at the staff level and at management level, you're eligible for points of discount. And we harvested, I want to say, eight or nine points of a discount. And I think there was a possibility of 18. So the pitch I was going to make to the rest of the board here, and I think it was only 18 for that one year or two. I don't think it's that high going forward. The pitch I would make to all of you is that if you, Gussie, you're, you know, your educational profile and get that on record, we can report that to SDRMA. And then we start to comply as a board for the four, I think, four or five percentage point discount that we can apply to our workers' comp insurance. And it is going to be, you know, another high bill going into next year.
Yeah.
Betsy, does that address what you were going to?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just noticing that it says there'll be more detail at the next board meeting, but I wonder if there's any way to, you know, get a list of a couple of courses that are already available on the SDRMA website that we could just go ahead and do.
Well, if you go to the California Special District Association, they have a lot of things that you can do as a board.
But I mean, do we need an approved list of which webinars would satisfy this requirement?
To my understanding, there's not an approved list for it. But there are people at SDRMA to ask about that. So, which is what I did. But my understanding is that if we work through California Special District Association, we have a discount for their services because we're an SDM, SDM R M A member. That all those things are sort of in sync with each other, all those programs.
Okay. Well, I volunteer, if it makes sense, to like look through the offerings on the, on the, you know, professional association, the district website to see, you know, just to make it easy for people to pick a, pick a, you know, pick a course and click the link and take it. You know, so I'd be, I mean, I just don't want to wait till the next meeting if anybody has time now to, or, you know, in the next month to do it.
Thank you, Betsy. That would be terrific.
Sure.
Well, and a little clarity, a little bit more clarification. I think they collect all the items that are making eligible for a discount in the first three months of the year. So, you know, as long as we get this in by the end of the year, all of us. So there's not really a timetable other than that that we have to remind.
Okay.
It's still, it'd still be great. And I think also maybe we could kind of spread out our expertise a little bit so that we're not all, you know, not that we shouldn't, you know, all be educated and everything. But, you know, if there's a way to cover a little bit more ground, surely that would be.
Okay, so I don't know, maybe, maybe what I can have ready at the next meeting is what, you know, what class, what courses there are. And maybe at that point, we could, we could divvy them out or, you know, make some kind of decision.
That sounds great. And maybe you could just double check to see if there are any reporting conventions we need to follow to make sure that we're, you know, getting credit for everything. Perfect. This is where my extra credit, like gene comes into. I have to really keep it together. They get extra credit? All right. Cool. Anything else for Terry? Any other questions for the Budget Committee? Okay, perfect. Thank you. Let's, let's move on to our ad hoc committee reports. CVRMA, there is, unless I'm, I'm missing something, Betsy. As far as I know, no report from us at this time. We're just chilling. We're waiting for the census data to come in. District Director Evaluation Process, Betsy, is there anything there?
Yes. Quickly, to report that Nikki has gotten the finalized copies of both the three and the six month evaluations that we did. There were a few, a few things that Roger needed to gather, a little tiny bit of missing data that needed to be included in that. She now has a copy for herself. A copy is ready to put in her personnel file, so we can check off Director Evaluation for now. But, you know, as, as we all are learning about Nikki, she doesn't wait around. And so she has contacted both Terry and myself with ideas about ways to create a better version of an evaluation format for her 12-month evaluation, which would be in November. So Terry and I will be just taking a look at that and working with her to make sure we have the best possible document, now that we've had some experience in the first two sets of evaluations that we did. So we'll be working on that over the next little bit.
Fantastic. Just out of curiosity, Betsy, did we ever figure out what we need to do, if anything, on signing stuff? Or did we, I can't remember what we decided. Did we decide that we were just going to let it go and then sign it whenever?
Yeah. So Rogers, Roger Crawford of BB&amp;K advised, advised me, and I can tell you that, that it's, it's a legally binding thing now. I mean, it's in effect, is what I mean to say, that the goals and the recommendations and everything we laid out in the evaluations are in effect and that we just wait until the next time we can get into the building. I mean, he suggests that the best thing to do would be to, to have all of our signatures on on the document and not each of us sign a document and have, you know, four or five versions of it. So I'll keep track. I guess I can't check it off completely. Keep track of when, when the door is open and I can nag you all to go and sign it.
Perfect. Okay, great. All right. Any questions for Betsy or anything else on evaluation? No? Okay, perfect. So that brings us to the Public Funding Committee. And as, yeah, take a deep breath. As you all saw, there is a ginormous report in your board package. And I want to thank Betsy so much, as well as all of our consultants and experts who helped make sure that we were communicating everything to you as clearly as we possibly could. Here's my inclination, which is I'd like to sort of walk through some of our big issues. Now, we have some procedural content that is the result of this committee work, basically later on in the agenda. But I think probably the most effective use of everybody's time is to discuss some of the big picture questions and, you know, answer any concerns that anybody might have at this point. I'll also note that we have a number of people who are now online with us. We've got representatives from NBS, from Clifford Moss, from BB&amp;K, from Columbia Capital. I don't think I'm missing anybody. So we have experts standing by in case there are questions that, you know, Betsy and I and Nikki don't know the answers to, or we'd like to consult with our, with our experts. So, um, you know, I guess sort of big picture, what I'd say is, as we've discussed in the past, the idea is to figure out how to pay for both our capital improvement needs and to satisfy our programming and service needs that we have into the future. And having seen the reports from ARG and realizing that what we're looking at are substantial sums, well, and, you know, at minimum 10 million, but certainly probably in excess of that. The thing that makes the most sense is to pursue a public financing option. So there are a lot of moving parts in that. The first moving parts are some of the resolutions that appear on the agenda tonight. So in order for us to issue a bond or to take on basically public debt, we have to form what's called a Community Facilities District or a CFD. And so you'll see some, some resolutions in your board package tonight that effectuate the formation of a CFD. And that's something that can be done just by the board. It doesn't need voter approval. It's basically like, and I'm going to apologize to our experts for my analogies, but it's basically like forming an LLC, right? It's like forming a, an entity that can do financial things that the Altadena Library District as its own entity cannot. So in our case, the CFD would be exactly contiguous with the district. It would just overlay right on top of it. And the CFD is technically the entity that then would take on, would take on the bond debt, right? So that's sort of the, that's sort of the first piece. And that piece has to be done regardless of when we decide it makes the most sense to go to voters on a ballot initiative. So that piece is, is basically what we're going to be asking for a decision on tonight. And we can talk through any of those pieces. The other sort of big picture item, as you guys all know, is the idea that we want to preserve the option of the November ballot if it turns out to be a feasible option for the district. So obviously, there are a lot of unanswered questions and we are moving through the feasibility stage of answering those questions alongside our, you know, public opinion researchers and other consultants. But we want to keep that door open for as long as possible. So no final determination tonight on whether or not we go to the voters in November, but we're doing all the things we would need to do in order to preserve that as an option. I'm assuming everybody read the report. I don't want to bore you with a bunch of recitation of facts. So at this point, I think I'd like to just open it up for questions or discussion or comments because I, I think we can, we can be more productive that way. The floor is open.
I'll, I'll ask my first question slash comment. We could go in rotation. So I know within your report, Katie, you make it pretty clear we're going to need to do a special meeting on this one way or another in July. I guess my, my input in that, because, and this is a big question mark that I still have, that is, how much can we do as a district and as a, as a board as far as the campaign part of it is concerned, if we choose to do this? So I would, I would want that specifically agendized in a special meeting to understand the limitations, but then also spend time actually putting together a plan to implement what we can do within our limitations.
Absolutely. And I know that the folks at BB&amp;K are working on basically a memo of do's and don'ts of things that the district can do and cannot do, basically. And I know we have Nora on the phone here or on the, on the call, so I'm going to ask her to jump in as well. But basically, the way it breaks down is the district as an entity and any paid staff of the district can inform and they can educate and they can basically say facts, right? So they can say, this is what's going to be on the ballot. These are the things at stake. These are the facts of the matter. This is, you know, the rationale for why it is the way it is. They cannot advocate. So that's true for Nikki, for staff, for anybody who's a paid employee of the district. That is not true for us because we are sort of free agents. So basically, at the time where we make a decision about feasibility, whether it's for November or whether it's for the future, we would then transition into like a totally different, totally different way of operating, right? So there would be a sort of election phase, a campaign phase. And I know the folks at Clifford Moss have a lot of experience in figuring out what that plan looks like. So it's not like we'll be caught flat-footed going, well, like, I don't know if we have a plan or not. Like, we will have a plan. It's just that there's sort of a wall between what the district can do and what the Campaign Committee can do, if that, if that makes sense. But I want to, I want to let Nora or Laura from Clifford Moss jump in and speak to that as well.
Hi, this is Nora from BBK. And I know that, I mean, Katie was completely right. And I know that Ruben has prepared a memo that he's passed along to Nikki. And I believe mentioned possibly doing some training on it if she was interested in that. I'm the public finance person, so I'm not the elections law expert. But we have our people that have been working with the district on that. And generally what Katie said is, is correct. So if the decision is made to move forward, then we can definitely get something on that agenda for the 27th meeting to kind of lay out the do's and don'ts of election law basics.
Yeah. Laura, did you wanna jump in?
Hi, everyone. Hi, board. Hi, good evening. So yeah, Nora's right on the legal side. Absolutely. There's, there's do's and don'ts for both. And board members have a unique position where they can be independent. Right now, everything is public engagement. There is no measure because you haven't made a decision yet. So everything right now, you're doing your due diligence, you're doing your duty to the public to listen to them and think about what the best solution is. And then once a decision is made, once you vote, then Katie is exactly right. It shifts to, uh, public engagement should be provided by the library district to the public on information only. Uh, and I'm speaking more from a communications side than a legal side. I'll let the legal team handle that in a, an agenda in the future. But often we see something completely separate, an independent committee of citizens that come together. And that's a different effort altogether.
And I'll say, thank you so much, Laura. I'll say also, in terms of thinking about our timeline, one thing Nikki and I were talking about just today was the idea that, you know, because we have a lot of stuff coming at us in July, what might make sense is to schedule a special meeting, maybe for the 20th, like the week before our regular meeting, and get all of our business that we possibly can handle there. So that we have time on the, on the 27th to really just focus on the determination on feasibility. What happens next? The public hearing that we do. So that, that meeting is really just dedicated to that topic. So that would be, that would be when we would do that.
And I do have the memo. Do you guys want me to bring it up on screen or no?
Um, you, you know, maybe you just, do you want to just BCC us after the meeting and send it around? And then post it in the, in the public documents?
They did already create that memo for us on the do's and don'ts before and after we were to declare. And they're also doing a memo right now on the do's and don'ts for the board election too, just so you guys.
Perfect. Yeah, yeah. If you would, just BCC us after the meeting and we'll make sure it gets posted as a public document as well. Great question. Okay, other questions?
Well, this, I've got a, a question observation, I guess. First of all, what a terrific report. So thank you both for making sense out of all of this. It certainly crystallized for me as I read through this whole thing. Like Jason, I'm a little bit worried about timing. So it's really more of a comment than a question. Because if we decide that, you know, we get all of our activities done and we're right up to the wire on August the 7th or whatever it is, and you've got early ballots going out by mail and so on. There was just not a big window there. And does the advice that we get from the team that we've assembled include the best shot, you know, the best election that we should be looking at, given those kind of time constraints? And they may have in the report that you gave us, Katie, I'm not sure. But that one, that one worries me a bit.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a really valid concern, right? So we wanted to certainly as a committee, focus all of our energy first on answering the question about feasibility, right? So that's, that's the majority of the information that you see in the report that you have in your package. Certainly, you know, we've been having conversations all the way along around sort of a parallel track, right, of what would need to happen, what would need to be put in place, what preparations would need to be made in terms of a potential campaign and what that would look like. So that, that ball is moving, but you know, sort of pursuant to the, the charge of the board that was made at the May meeting, we want to make sure we really address the feasibility question as thoroughly as we can first before proceeding to that. But what I will say is that I have complete confidence in our friends at Clifford Moss. They have done a bunch of these. They know what they're doing. They've got a blueprint for campaigns like this. And as part of this public outreach and, you know, engagement process, they're getting to know Altadena. So I think, I, I totally agree with your concerns. As somebody who's, who's been in a lot of these conversations, I'll say I feel very confident about our positioning to move into a campaign phase, if that's what turns out to, to be recommended from, from the evidence we gather during this feasibility process.
Okay, thanks.
I didn't want to, I didn't want to get derailed into that conversation in this memo just because I felt like it would be kind of mixed messages, right? But I, I agree with you completely. Like, it's, it's definitely a quick, it's a quick turnaround. But I, I think it's, I think it's eminently doable.
I, I might just be able to reflect on the fact that after the last meeting, I then kind of went underwater to finish out my school year and retire. And so Katie and this incredible team that has been assembled, you know, moved along. And then I came up for air, you know, several weeks in. Oh yeah, June 5th, that was the day, June 10th, I guess. And I, I'll tell you, but, you know, both of you who are not on this committee, my first thought was, wait, what? I thought, I thought we said in May that, that it didn't make sense to put this on the ballot in November. And then as we went through all of the different scenarios and factors and pros and cons and everything, I was totally, totally convinced of the idea that it's critical for us to keep that option open. And, you know, and the other thing that I, that I was happy to sort of have come into focus as we went through this process was how valuable all this work is, no matter when or if even, we do this. Because the data that we are going to be collecting is data we need anyway, no matter what we do. And so it started to feel like an investment in our future, regardless of, you know, the crossroads that we face and which path we, we decide to go down on. And, and I guess lastly, at this point, I would just want to echo what, what Katie has said, that, you know, that, that the team that we have. I guess the other first thought I had was, wait, why do, why do we have all these different organizations? Why do we need so many people helping us? And then as I, we went through all these meetings, as each one of their expert, sets of expertise were called upon to clarify our path, I thought, oh yeah, of course, you know, we, we really do. We really do need all these people. They really know what they're doing. They do each have a special area of expertise. And again, no matter what we end up doing, the work that each one of them has, has assembled and will continue to develop as we go forward is gonna end up to be work that will have been worth our investment in. So for what that's worth.
That makes me feel better. Thank you. I mean, I'm just basically looking for a hearty endorsement from you two, and it sounds like I'm beating it, so it's good.
It's just a little bit to take in, that's all.
It's a, oh my God, it's a, it's like a fire hose. I, I have been telling you, the learning curve on this has been steep. And Betsy and I, when we were talking about this report, both agreed that if we tried to present things to you guys in the order in which we learned them, it would be a ton volume, you know, set that you would have show up at your doorstep. So I do want to talk through a couple of the major issues that we as a committee made some determinations on and get your guys', you know, input, sign off, approval reactions to those. Cause I, I think there are some pretty important architectural choices that I want to make sure we're all on the same page about. So, um, let me just pull up my report, a million pages of it. Okay, so we've talked about the idea that, you know, the goal is to sort of preserve November as an option. In terms of timeline, I will say that, you know, the next big piece of this is a dual pronged approach. So one is functionally a quantitative assessment. So it's some polling that's aimed at 600 likely voters in Altadena. And we're going to be trying to assess the level of support that, that we could hopefully expect in November. Now, obviously it's a long time between now and November. And if 2020 has taught us anything, it's that a lot can happen in a short span of time. But we're still going to get the very best data that we can in assessing where people's sentiments are, at least right now. The other piece of that is a qualitative outreach process. And so that's going to be handled by myself, Betsy, Nikki, Bridget from the foundation, and at least one representative from the Friends. And we're basically going to be conducting interviews with folks. And I, I know that all of you saw that spreadsheet of folks from the community. And we certainly want to get to as many of them as we can. And basically just ask for their input to say, you know, here's where we are. Here's the decision we're looking at making. Here's some of the pros and cons. What are your thoughts? What's your feedback? No determination has been made yet, but we wanted to get your input before we came to a decision in July. So both of those tracks will be kicking off this week, I believe. Tuesday is the date set for the poll to go into the field. And our outreach process is gonna start with our next meeting on Friday. So we've got like a whole packet for all of what we're calling our opinion leaders. But basically, you know, folks in Altadena who are invested, involved in the library, involved in the community, know what's going on. We want to, we want to get their input. So those two processes are going to unfold over the next two to three weeks. We should have that information back by hopefully like the 15th, 16th of July. At that time, we'll know sort of where folks are falling and we'll be able to make a little bit more of a determination and a recommendation to the full board on what we think feasibility is looking like. And then we would either transition into that election window or we would regroup and, and look at other options, right? If it turns out that November is not looking feasible. So that's, that's sort of the timeline between now and the next, you know, the next decision point, the next inflection point that we have. I want to talk a little bit about the idea of wrapping together parcel tax replacement funding and capital improvement funding. So one of the big conversations that we've had is that it seems like it would be really challenging to go to, to go to the community and say, okay, we need all this money to fix our buildings. And then two years or four years later to go back and say, and we need you to renew the parcel tax. Because I think the response of, of most folks would be, well, we just gave you a whole bunch of money. And I think it would be a real uphill battle to try to explain that those two things are different, even though of course they are. So one option that we have, which makes a lot of sense, is to wrap both of them together into a single ballot measure. So what that would be is, you know, a certain percentage or a certain amount that would be reserved for capital improvements and then a certain amount that would be for services. Now, obviously the parcel tax doesn't sunset until 2024. So the services part wouldn't kick in until the parcel tax goes away. So we wouldn't be, you know, basically levying a double tax on people. It would kick in once that parcel tax sunsets and then would continue to fund services from there on out. The rate that we've looked at for services is an increase from where the parcel tax was. Because if you guys recall that 10 year projection, if we maintain our parcel tax funding at its current level, that's going to be insufficient to fund operations and maintain the level of reserves that were, you know, legally required to do by 2025, 2024, 25. It's right in there is where it sort of crosses the line into the red. So that's, that's one big structural piece. Any questions or concerns about, about that piece?
Yeah, Katie, I had one question. The, so the, I don't, it's not, I don't, it's probably not called a line item, but the, the service costs, you know, the numbers that are in there are roughly 1.1 million a year, right? That we'd be looking at.
Right.
Is that, is that limited for some legal reasons? Or like, is there any reason why we couldn't seek more than that?
Um, just, just what we, what our kind of impulse is on what the electorate might be willing to bear. So obviously because we're, you know, looking at, asking for a really potentially substantial amount in capital costs, it seemed wise to go with a number for services that would, you know, put us in a, in a good position, but wouldn't represent like basically an undue burden on taxpayers, right? So I think, you know, the other part of this is, all of this is, is a little bit exciting because we have to make all of these decisions about structure and architecture now. And then they last for 30 years. And so that's, that's real wild. So the idea is, what is the services rate? Now, of course, we'll still have our regular property tax revenue, right? Like, that's going to continue to come in and we can use that for whatever we want to use it for. But the services revenue that would come as part of this measure would be allocated exclusively to services. So we couldn't like decide we wanted to use that money to, I don't know, build a new building someplace, right? It has to stay with services, but it's only that component of our budget. Our property tax revenue that we get normally, you know, is like an unrestricted fund. We can, we can use it however we, we need to. So we've got some flexibility there because that revenue represents about two thirds of our budget. So that's, that's nice because it allows us some, some give and take.
You know, I just, I just asked, I'm thinking back to, you know, the, the community conversations we had leading up to the strategic plan and some of the, I guess, ideas that came from the community such as, you know, is there going to be an ability in the future to go back to providing some kind of open services on Sundays, for instance, right?
Right, right.
And there's just, you know, there's obviously budget constraints for that and the other ideas for expanded services that people have talked about.
Yeah, no question about it. And I, I think, you know, one thing that we've learned from those 10 year projections is if we stay at our current rate of, of parcel tax revenue assessment, we're gonna have to cut services, right? Like, not, not only will we not be able to maintain our current hours and our current offerings, we're gonna have to dramatically scale those back. So this, you know, sort of based on input from, from Nikki and from staff, as well as our, you know, folks who administer our current parcel tax, seemed like the most reasonable rate that would allow us to at least maintain what we're doing and then potentially expand in the future. Given that all of these things are also tied to, you know, a regular 2% year over year increase, just like our current parcel taxes to reflect, you know, kind of, the kind of consistent rate of inflation and whatnot.
Okay.
Yeah, but yeah, it's, it's a, it's a really good question. Um, okay, yeah, Terry.
Same vein, um, the, I'm sorry, I might have said, you might've said I had to step away for just a second here. But the, um, the services component that you talked about could be used the same way that it is now. Like where we could be buying furniture and making small repairs and things like that, that, that pipeline of mine, right?
I think, I think, and I'm gonna defer to our experts who are on the line here, but I think the services component has to be used exclusively for something in our services budget. 70% of our budget is basically services, right? It's people, it's salaries and benefits and all that. So basically you could think of this piece as covering, you know, some of that chunk. It, it wouldn't even cover all of it, but it could. And then we can use our property tax revenue for whatever other things we want to use it for.
My understanding is that we just could not use it for capital. Like you, we couldn't take the, the money that we get for the services side of it and like, let's say, set up a line for capital improvement. That money couldn't go into something like that. So that's, that's what I understand is the restriction.
Okay, I, so it couldn't go into the roof ladders that, you know, people are putting up and things like that.
But that, if that's maintenance and operating costs, then yes.
I guess that's what my, my cutoff was, was that. And then the other second part of that question, forgive me again if you've already talked about this, but, you know, we're gonna get a capital component out of this of, to say $20 million. And there's a good chance that our capital improvements won't cost that much, the, the plans that we have. So would that change, we just hold basically and use that as a payback part of the, the bond and so on? How does that work?
Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Nora jump in here for a minute, but my under.
Michael or Mike, you probably know too.
Yeah, yeah. I'm gonna let, yeah, either Nora or Mike, if, if one of you guys would like to speak to that. Because I know there are a lot of, there are a lot of rules about how you can and can't use some of this money.
Or Sarah, Sarah might know.
Or Sarah, yep. It's like Jeopardy, anybody can buzz in.
So this is Nora and Sarah can jump in too. I, I kind of missed the second question, but with respect to the services, and these are all included as Exhibit B to Resolution 2020-05, sets forth the list of facilities and services that can be funded with the special tax. So services currently. So services currently are set up to consist of the operation, maintenance, repair, and provision of any other services with respect to facilities, including replacement. And you can fund, uh, like a replacement fund in the, for replacement of facilities in the future.
So it sounds like we can use it exactly the way we're using it now.
Yep.
And then to, to jump in on your second question about the estimated bond proceeds that we're looking at now, based on the cost that we're in the ARG report, compared to what the cost of those facilities might be when you're actually ready to do the construction. We're setting with the series of resolutions now, we're setting a maximum bonded indebtedness. And so this is the, the limit of the bonds you may issue. So there's a couple of, of components to that. So we're setting the maximum special tax right now, but we're not yet issuing bonds. We wouldn't issue bonds until much later in the process, after the election, after the formation is complete and so forth. And so should you have one better cost estimates, you may not need to issue as much debt as you anticipate you might need right now because you have better cost estimates, maybe the, um, market is a little bit softer and you're getting better prices or that sort of thing. And so you can actually issue less debt than you, than you anticipate now, as long as it's under that ceiling that you're setting. And so the function of that would be that the portion of the special tax that you need for debt service is less. And then that makes available more funding for services.
That's great, thank you, Sarah. Mike, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
No, the, the only thing is that Sarah pointed out, you know, the, uh, when the, when the election is successful, I want to be very positive about that. It would be sometime next year. And then, uh, also, uh, the, in the formation documents, you're going to have a, a hard dollar limit on how many dollars you can borrow for construction. And then what we would do when we're ready to issue debt, we'd have you go out and bid out these public works contracts. And we would only borrow the money that, that you need after you award the bid. So, you know, as I think Sarah pointed out, you know, maybe next year, you know, kind of the economy slows down a little bit or there's more contractors and work available. And so that's going to, you know, be a determinant on how many dollars you need to, to borrow. And, and we don't have to do this all in one bond issue. We could do several series of bonds. Because you want to kind of balance out, it's costly to issue bonds, but you want to be able to use all your proceeds within three years. So managing multiple contracts might be a little challenging. So we can talk about that later, but we've also kind of put in a little cushion as far as the interest rates go. We, we've kind of estimated interest rates would be higher next year. But in, in my humble opinion, I think they'll be, um, you know, lower or, uh, you know, maybe about the same. So that's just kind of the fixture on the financing side.
Yeah. What we're basically doing is authorizing what would be equivalent to like a credit limit, right? We're saying we can borrow up to this amount. We may not borrow all of it, but because of the way all this works, you can't ever borrow more.
Right.
So we want to imagine the maximum possible that we might need at some point in the future. And then we can see, as, as Mike says, kind of where we find ourselves in the future. Yeah.
And can I just say, I mean, kudos to you, Terry and Jason, because, because of the work you guys did in the Facilities Committee and with ARG, we can make a very reasoned, educated, defensible estimate. You know, so it's not, we're not just pulling numbers out of the air. You guys did all the groundwork that gave us at this stage of the game what we need to be able to set, set that maximum limit and have confidence that it's a number that's based on our actual needs.
So that's right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's absolutely right. I want to, uh, I want to come to sort of the, the corollary of this piece, which is rate and method of apportionment. So another big architectural decision we needed to make as a committee in order to set up all the documentation that you guys see in front of you tonight, is basically how we would imagine levying a special tax. And so as you guys know, the parcel tax is set up as a flat rate per parcel on, you know, single-family homes, multifamily units, and commercial property that's divided by square footage. So less or more than 10,000 square feet. So, oh, hang on, it looks like we had a public comment. Okay, public comment, I'm going to pause myself here and I want to address this. So we had a public comment on the YouTube live stream asking, when will funding actually be available for the library to begin capital improvements? Again, I'm going to let our experts help with this, but basically my understanding is you go to voters and if they approve the measure, then you, Mike, what happens next?
What happens next is that, um, you, you know, you, the district would decide which projects they want to proceed with. And then they would request bids because these are public works projects, so they have to go out to bid. And then we would, uh, you know, get the, get everything we need together for the financing. You know, we would get, just like you do in a home mortgage, you know, you, they do a, they check your credit rating, uh, you know, the rating service and so forth. So we would, we would do that for the bonds. There's an offering document that needs to be available to the potential purchasers of the bonds. So that takes about, you know, between two and a half and three months. So we would put a calendar together and, and we, you know, got to do these things along the same track where you're, uh, you're bidding out the contracts. And then the, uh, the bids would be received by the board. And we would be all set to, you know, proceed with the financing once we knew the exact amount of, um, you know, what the bidding, uh, winning bidder on the contract is. So I would imagine that would be, you know, probably sometime May or June of next year after, you know, this election is successful.
Yeah, so great, perfect. That's a really clear answer. So presuming that we're successful in November, we would have basically money in hand, maybe around this time next year. Which is, I think, you know, not to, not to sort of advocate too strongly for what I think you're able to discern as my position, but which is, I think, another, another strong rationale for why we would want to proceed to, you know, a ballot measure as soon as we possibly can. Because like every day that we don't make repairs, that cost continues to increase and that maintenance gets deferred, right? So the longer we kick the can down the road, the more expensive it is and the more, the more of a burden that is. So hopefully, hopefully, commenter that answered your question. I'm gonna, as I said before, I think last meeting, we're going to be real relaxed with public comments. We're going to try to engage them as, as frequently as we can. So if we have other comments come in on, on YouTube or by phone, just throw them out there and we'll, we'll handle them as we go. So, okay, so, so back to this idea of, of rate and method of apportionment, right? So like, how do we, how do we levy this special tax? So like I said, the parcel tax, flat tax per parcel, that's how it goes. So NBS presented us with a couple of different methods of handling this, as well as various different budgets that take into account the priority list that ARG prepared, right? The things that we have to do, the sort of priority one, priority two, priority three, and then some optional projects. And you guys saw all of that broken out. I'm not gonna, not going to go into it right now. But basically, there are a couple of different ways we can levy it. One way is to do exactly what the parcel tax does, just flat rate levy per parcel. Option number two is to exclude undeveloped property from that. So people who underwrite bonds don't like to bond against undeveloped property, which is reasonable. Plus, there's the argument that if you have undeveloped property, they're probably not active library users since there's nobody on that property. So if you exclude undeveloped property and then still have your flat rate per parcel, that's option number two. Option number three also excludes undeveloped property, but it looks at a per square foot rate versus a per parcel flat rate. And so the recommendation that, that Betsy and I are going to make to you guys is that we feel that's the most reasonable and fair way to do it. But we'd, we'd like to get your feedback on that.
Well, I'll start. I, I think that all the recommendations that you all made in the report, I would, I would go with. And you recommended that approach, as I recall, as the way to go for that. You know, paying the premium to get the survey split into two, two different groups to measure the upper and the lower end works with me as well. So I was in lockstep with all of the different ones that you had.
Okay, great.
Yeah, no, the same for me. I'm, I'm, I think the recommendations themselves all work. I mostly just had some kind of questions, frankly, on next steps after.
Okay, fabulous. Well, then, I, I mean, I don't want to forestall discussion, but I certainly don't want to waste anybody's time either. So are there any, if we, if we don't need to go through each other's recommendations, if those all basically make sense and work for you guys, what other questions or concerns or issues would you like to address at this point?
Well, one issue for me would be trying to get critical mass in the community.
Right.
And that, you know, when you look back in 2014, when we did that, that tax measure, I think I sent the list to Nikki of all the sponsors that we had, which was about 50 or so. And so there's a lot of, you know, mustering the troops, if you will, for this sort of thing. So one thing that, uh, I guess one thing that strikes me is, you know, to the extent that you need help from the board, from, from me, for example, for doing these sorts of things, you know, let, let me know on that. But that seems to be, to me, where most of the work needs to be done. And there also, from what I've read about this, needs to be headed off, or at least we need to be aware of any tax sort of backlash that we might get from the community. Because they, the death knell for a lot of the measure As across the country, according to what I was reading before, was the organized resistance to raising taxes of any kind. And I can see that being sort of a culprit in the present, in the present economic climate, if you will. So there's, so it's two fronts to sort of address. And I guess I'm just volunteering for any help you need and helping to explore that stuff.
Love it, definitely. It will take you up on that. Yeah, I mean, the sort of, again, I don't want to get too much into the sort of election window stuff tonight, but I, I do want to assure you that sort of that, that thought process is ongoing and rigorous. And again, I want to say that I have just a ton of confidence in the folks at Clifford Moss. I mean, their experience on these funding measures up and down the state of California is invaluable. And they really have identified, you know, potential pitfalls, potential things that could really trip us up in, in pursuing this and ways to help people understand what we're trying to, what we're trying to accomplish and, and why it's going to be like a net positive for the community. So I, I do, if, if Laura, if you have anything else you'd like to add to that, I'd certainly like to let you do that. But I will also say, you know, we're going to just have to be very structured and thoughtful, which I think comes back to Jason's question about sort of training and, and process, such that as we move into hopefully an election phase in late July, early August, we're still, you know, observing all the constraints of the Brown Act, making sure that we're not crossing any lines, you know, making any mistakes in terms of that. So having a really clear set of, of procedures and, and how kind of each of us interact in that process, I think will be really helpful. But I feel confident that we'll have a, a good blueprint for that.
Yeah, I'll just add that I think part of that is the foundation of what you've already been doing, the fact that you built an extensive publicing, um, facilities master plan, the fact that you had an extensive strategic planning, community-built strategic planning effort with goals that match getting your facility needs accomplished, as well as maintaining and potentially expanding your service needs. I would just say thank you to everyone for investing in what's happening right now, which is the due diligence feasibility research phase. Because I think you're right that we do need to understand what the tax sensitivity is of the community. And so we're hoping that the research will tell us before important decisions are made as to whether or not to place a ballot on the November, on, on November 3rd presidential, is what is that tax sensitivity in a research form? And also with these interviews and understanding from as many community members as possible, how do they feel about these critical facility and service needs that you have? And how, what is their value base for, for understanding that? So that we can get a read of the community and what that potential sensitivity is now, before important decisions are made. Once you make a decision, I think there's also ways to think about communicating the values and, and making sure that it's a prudent and responsible decision.
Yeah. And I, I think, thank you, Laura. I think that's, that's well said. And I would add to that, it's, it's one of the big reasons that we've been inviting the leadership from the Friends and the Foundation to some of these committee meetings as we go along, is to make sure that our support groups are on board, you know, are in agreement, are sort of in step with us all the way along. Because when we do transition to that other phase, obviously, their help and their, their manpower and their enthusiasm and, and their drive is going to be invaluable to that process. So I, I feel very confident, I don't want to speak for, for the Friends or the Foundation, but I think I can say from our conversations that they are, they are fully in support, totally, totally on board. So I anticipate, you know, a lot of assistance from both of those groups as well. Other questions or comments that anybody would like to address at this point? Of course, we have a ton of action items related to this, so there's going to be no shortage of opportunities. But I want to make sure if there's anything else you guys want to hash out now, that we have the option, the option to do that. Okay, cool. Then I'm going to declare this, uh, this report concluded. Thank you, guys. And again, thank you to, to Nikki and to Betsy and to all of our team of consultants who helped to clarify all of these issues for us. I know it's a, it's a lot. And thank you to you and to you, Terry, and to you, Jason, for kind of catching up with, with where all of this has, has been in the sort of, you know, previously on public finance section. Okay, how's everybody doing? Do we need to take a quick break? You want to move on to action items? How are we feeling?
I can keep going.
Okay.
I can keep going. I, I, I think I'm going to need a break.
Uh-oh, Betsy, you got muted. You were, you were telling me when you were going to need a break.
Sorry, I was, errant finger there. I, I'm fine to go, keep going now. I'm, I'm pretty sure I'll need a break at some point before we're actually done, so.
No problem.
If you want to offer it again later, I appreciate it.
I sure will, I sure will. Okay, so that brings us to new business. So we're going to proceed to Item A, Classification and Compensation Reports and Recommendations. So Nikki, I'll let you take it away.
All right. So I, I don't know how much detail I need to go into after you guys watched the presentation from Mike and Georg earlier. But ultimately, what came out of the classification study was we had 16 classifications. We, the recommendation brought forward 14 of them. Like, an example is we had a clerk one and a library clerk two. One was part-time, one was full-time. They both were mushed into one, which is now a library clerk. And it was, you know, recommended that it be paid at the lib, library clerk two level. Other than that, like, there was just a couple of title changes. For example, we called the position Library Associate. When they looked at all the comparators, it's Library Assistant pretty much across the board. So we, of course, adopted that. And it did result in several classification title changes. Not so much change in the work, but just what people are being called. So that we're comparing apples to apples. And when we move forward with recruiting, I think it'll be a lot easier, basically. Another, uh, what would you say? Recommendation that we are going to adopt, but really you can't see it now because it's like long-term planning. And I have talked to Katie about this, is that if you look, we have one librarian in our system, which is pretty odd for a library system to have one professional librarian. I mean, many of the managers do have their library degree as well, but they definitely recommend that we create more librarian positions. And it is our plan that as we have vacancies and we can fill, that we're going, we would like to- that we're going, we would like to put librarians in pretty much all of the departments, as well as over at Bob Lucas. So we'll see an expansion of the librarian role across the system. But again, right now, we, we don't have the capacity to do that, and we would really like to wait until we have vacancies and be strategic about how we fill them. So I just wanted to let you guys know that there's definitely an intention to expand the librarian classification in our system, when the opportunity presents itself, basically. Okay, so that's what I had for classifications. As far as compensation goes, as you can see from my staff report, we had several classifications that were substantially underpaid based on the market standard. So again, and, and we were, like, at one point, when I talked to you guys, we had brought up, oh, well, it's going to cost, like, just to pay these, you know, six, the six classifications that were the most grossly underpaid, like $70,000 to $80,000. Well, that's not the way it works. So when we sat down again with Coffin Associates, they showed us that salary scale that's in your, in your package, that has from 1 to 70. And then they, they showed us where they recommend that classification go in. So for example, like Administrative Services Manager, they recommended that that get put at the 42 salary scale, which would then put Nicole into step one, not at the, the high end. And I think when we were doing calculations, we were basing it on that top salary step. So we thought we'd have to split it up and do it in two groups, basically, to be able to do it for everyone. But since it just moved people into the, like, the closest step, sometimes it was step one, we were able, as, as Nicole's fiscal impact said, to, it would just be an additional $91,900 to get every single employee in the correct salary scale. And this actually meant, for some staff, a very minor, but it, no, like, nobody lost wage or, or salary at all. Everybody actually got a little bump in some way, shape, or form. But the more grossly underpaid are definitely got, are going to get a substantial increase and bring those classifications on board with where we need them to be, to be able to do recruitments. So I'm happy to answer other questions. Again, I know this was many, many, many pages. I do feel like I tried to keep you guys as updated as possible through the process, so none of this hopefully came as a surprise. But I do think all the recommendations they made are right on board with what we need to do. And I think, you know, in my opinion, we can afford it, because we did have a couple of positions vacate that we're not filling at this point, as well as that 2% we put aside. So I, it's definitely my recommendation that we go with the title changes, reclassifications, as well as all the suggested salary ranges.
Any questions? Oh, go ahead, Terry. Thanks.
I just had kind of a baseline question. With all of the flux and everything, people leaving, people coming, how many employees do you have right now in the library?
I think it's 33. Nicole? Is that right?
33.
33.
And then you talked about having a librarian for each department and so on. You're, it sounds like your ideal staff, if you were fully staffed and we were out of the COVID era and things were gone, would be like 37 or 38. Is that about right?
Well, I do think that, like, depending on the department or the building, but the way I'm kind of seeing it is, let's say we have a full-time staff person leave adult services, for example. At that point, we upgrade from a library assistant to a librarian. So it's, to me, it's not necessarily additional positions. I, I think right now, it, we're at a pretty healthy level. If we could potentially add staff, possibly, but based on everything that we saw with those 10-year forecasts, I don't know that adding staff is something that we'll really be doing. I think it should be through attrition, like, as we have openings come up. If it makes sense that we could upgrade that position, then it's not as much of a hit too. You know, it's just taking from library assistant up to librarian.
Okay.
So my question is, you know, I'm assuming Nicole and others took the due diligence, but does the, the $91,000, does that include the impact to other areas, such as pension contributions and insurances and stuff like that?
I believe so, but I'll let Nicole answer that.
Yes, it does. It accounts for payroll taxes and all other benefits.
Okay. And I'll just, then I'll just echo your comments earlier, Nikki. I'm really glad we've taken the initiative to do this, but I'm equally happy to see, I was expecting this number to be way bigger and us having to have a conversation about how in the world are we going to pay for this as well. So that's good to see that we can do the right thing and we can also afford to do the right thing. I guess kind of as a follow-up question to the previous point about assessing positions as we have vacancies and whatnot, has there been any discussion as far as, like, creating, like, actual career ladders within the district?
I, I do know that I've spent quite a bit of time talking organizational structure with Katie. And the, since we've been talking every week, that's a conversation we have quite a bit. I do think by adding that extra level of librarian, it is helping, it will help us retain, especially those people that go to library school and get their degree and want to continue moving up that ladder, as, as you could say. Because really, like, what it would mean is adding a, a technical services librarian, a Bob Lucas librarian, adult services, and children's. So by, by adding, upgrading four positions like that, I do think it provides more opportunities. And since we did create that, you know, it was called librarian two, but library manager level, there is an ability for people to continue to move up, which I think helps retain as well.
Yeah, I mean, as we've heard, you know, over the, you know, a couple of years that this board's been in place, you know, there's been a couple of, of great examples of staff, you know, earning advanced degrees. So it's good to hear that we're at least thinking about how do we structure things so that we can recognize the work that goes into getting those degrees, for sure.
Well, and I, I think also, you know, one thing that I know has been a major step forward is just making sure that everybody's evaluations are completed and consistent. And I think that a lot of that career advancement work is probably happening on a one-to-one, you know, sort of mentorship level. And that, that is something that definitely could not be said previously. And I, I would suspect that after several years of consistent evaluation processes, we may discover some, you know, common themes or common, you know, sequences of events that might be helpful to share across staff. But I, I know that that's been a huge undertaking that Nikki and Nicole have made. And of course, all the managers as well have made a huge, huge dent in the backlog.
I, I have a list on my board, and I'm happy to say, besides one person who we haven't been able to give one to because of being closed, we're 100% caught up, like, everybody's evaluation is done.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, it's huge.
That's a good point. Thanks, Katie.
I'd just like to, just reflect as a librarian myself. And just hearing, hearing Katie mention the word mentor is what's bringing this to mind. And, and I just have to say, even though I have loved my career as a school librarian, that was a huge piece that's just not as strong as public librarianship. I think mentorship is built in to public librarianship as a profession. And, you know, I think, I think Nikki's leadership is really reflective of that, just both in terms of getting a sense of the mentorship that has brought her to where she is and also the mentorship that she's providing and I'm sure is kind of trickling down to the rest of the staff. So I, I, I'm, I am so happy to, to hear about the increased commitment to bringing librarians onto the staff, because I think that's, that is a reflection of, of the way that mentorship can really, I mean, that in itself will improve and enhance our services. So that's an investment, and that is an investment in improving our services. At the same time, though, I do want to give a quick shout out to paraprofessionals, because I, you know, in the school world too, I think a lot of times, library assistants and, you know, people without necessarily a, a library degree can sometimes be overlooked or undervalued in terms of their professionalism, even though they don't have a professional library degree. You know, none of us could do, you know, no librarians can do what they can do without, without that whole cadre of people who bring their own set of skills. So everybody's, everybody's bringing a lot to the table.
Well, and I had actually reached out to the Executive Director of SCLC, which stands for Southern California Library Cooperative that we're a member of, to try to set up some sort of regional mentorship program so that we could connect our staff to, like, you know, mentors and other library systems and get them out to meet with them and see the other way things are done. You know, some staff have, here have worked in other libraries, but I can tell you from working in three different systems how much more you learn and well-rounded you are in the work that you do when you see it from another perspective. So that, that kind of got put on hold because of everything, but I'm still going to push that once we start meeting again.
Yeah, it's a great idea. Any other questions or comments before we proceed to a motion on this one? No? Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion that we approve the title changes, reclassifications, and updated job descriptions as presented by Coffin Associates. And furthermore, that we adjust the salary schedule to reflect the new salary ranges for all classifications so that we can pay everybody at market rate for their positions.
I assume.
I second that.
I had two seconds at the same time.
Jason.
Okay, I'll take it.
Okay, good. Perfect. So moved by Betsy and seconded by Terry. Any further discussion on this item? Okay, hearing them, we're going to go ahead and proceed to a roll call vote. Trustee Andrews?
Aye.
Trustee Capel?
Aye.
Trustee Khan? And an I vote for me. So that's unanimously approved. Big round of applause and thank you to Nikki and Nicole and everybody who worked so hard on making this happen. It's a big, big, big project.
Yes.
Awesome. All right, we are proceeding to item B, which is one of the things we do every year. And it is a resolution to ask the Auditor Controller of Los Angeles County to prepare the new tax rule for account number 57.12. Nicole or Nikki, is there anything that we need to know on this resolution?
Not particularly. I did want to point out the report that accompanies it, that NBS sent along. And it does show that the parcel tax actually increases by the CPI every year, the Consumer Price Index. And so it's a little bit different than the property tax income, which is only the 2%. So this year, they're asking for a 3.36% increase based on CPI.
Absolutely right. Thank you. Any questions or comments on this resolution? Like I said, we do this every year. This is kind of one of our standard pieces of business. Okay, great. Then I'm going to ask for a motion that we approve Resolution 2020-03 to ask the Auditor Controller of LA County to prepare the new tax rule.
I move. I so move that we do that.
Perfect. Jason, did I hear a second from you?
Yes, I'll second.
Okay, perfect. So moved and seconded. Any discussion? Other comments? Okay, hearing them, we'll proceed to a roll call vote on this one. Trustee Andrews?
Aye.
Trustee Capel?
Aye.
Trustee Khan?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so that's unanimously approved. Fantastic. That brings us to item C, which is the approval of our fiscal year 2021 budget. We've talked about this a little bit already. You guys have in your board report beginning, or in your board package, excuse me, beginning on page 131, a sort of line item by line item note on increases and decreases. I think I'll just note again, as Terry did in his Budget Committee report, that we actually are going to end up with a decreased drawdown from reserves, so that's good. Nicole, anything that you'd like to highlight on this?
No, I'm, I'm happy to go line by line again, or I know we have a lot to get through. So if everybody thinks that the report looks fine to them, I'm happy also to know to that. I did want to point out, though, that the, the increase to salaries and wages, that $91,000 figure is, it's actually a little lower, because we do have one full-time and one part-time vacancy that are accounted for within the budget. And that, those two positions really account for about $100,000 that's not being used in the budget. So really, that salary adjustment is closer to $200,000. So it is, it's a substantial change to the budget to get everybody to where they need to be.
Yeah. A quick question from me, Nicole. On the line item two on page 134, so our drawdown from reserves, in the proposed budgets listed at 189, 150, but then on the fiscal impact part of the staff report, it says that the changes result in an overall drawdown of 245, 850. So I was just wondering if you could clarify that for me.
Yeah, I, I missed it. And I had sent two versions of it to Nikki. And unfortunately, the staff report has the incorrect figure. The figure in the budget is the right one. It's that 189, 150 is the true number.
Okay, great. I love a lower number. Any other questions for Nicole? Obviously, we've talked through this in the Budget Committee portion, but no? Good. Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion that we approve the proposed budget as presented for fiscal year 2021.
I'll move.
I'll second that.
Perfect. Moved and seconded. Thanks. Any discussion or questions, comments at this time? All right, hearing them, we'll proceed to a roll call vote. Trustee Andrews?
Aye.
Trustee Capel?
Aye.
Trustee Khan?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The budget is approved. Guys, we're blowing through these action items. What? It's fantastic. It's because we did all the work ahead of time. All right, that brings us to item D, which is to, again, another piece of the annual business review and file our GAN appropriation limit. Once again, Nicole, anything we need to know here?
No, the report is pretty self-explanatory, but I'm happy to answer questions if maybe somebody hasn't seen this before or doesn't remember it. It's just ensuring that we're within the legal limit we're allowed to ask for, for property taxes.
Any questions on this one? Okay, great. Love that. All right, then let us have a motion to review and accept the appropriation limit as reflected in your board package for fiscal year 2020, 2021.
So moved.
Perfect. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded. Thank you. Any discussion or questions or comments at this time? Great. Hearing none, we'll proceed again to a roll call vote on this. Trustee Andrews?
Aye.
Trustee Capel?
Aye.
Trustee Khan?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so that's accepted. All right, we come now to item E, which begins on page 140 of your board package. So we're gonna, again, sort of pick up another piece of our classification and compensation study results, which is to review and file the new salary schedule. So Nikki or Nicole, anything you want to talk through on this that we haven't covered in previous business?
No, this just includes all the, the new titles that were part of the class and comp study, and these figures were pulled directly from the matrix that Coff supplied.
Perfect. Great. One thing I'll note is that we do come into alignment with the $15 minimum wage, which is nice to be able to do at this time. Okay, then I'd like to ask for a motion to review and file the Alzina Library District Salary Schedule Board Approved Compensation Study Recommendations, which will be effective July 1, 2020.
I so move.
Can I get a second?
A second.
All right, perfect. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing them, we'll go ahead to a vote. Trustee Andrews?
Aye.
Trustee Capel?
Aye.
Trustee Khan?
Aye.
I vote aye as well, so that's unanimously approved and filed. All right, coming into item F. So here we have our earthquake policy, which is our earthquake insurance that we dealt with, it seems like a million years ago. it seems like a million years ago, but it's, I can't remember when we actually went through this whole process. I think it was earlier this year. And so just a real quick report from either Nikki or Nicole. Again, I think this is pretty self-explanatory, but if you have any notes for us?
We're just, we're going with the same carrier. It's Lloyd's. They are a non-admitted carrier, but because our limits are so high, our only options really now are non-admitted carriers. And our broker did say that they had seen a noticeable increase in rates across the board. So this rate is actually a very, very minimal increase, and they think it's our, our best option for coverage for this year.
And Nicole, we really worked this up last year, as I recall, right? You went out to the market and figured out the best one for us.
Yes, it was, yeah, a much more substantial effort last year, once we increased all the actual replacement rates of the properties rather than just using their current value.
Okay.
And so if I recall, Nicole, we have an insurance policy, which if there were to be a serious earthquake, would allow us to actually replace everything to like rebuild the buildings and replace all the stuff, which is why it's a substantial, substantial policy. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, perfect. So we're looking at a, basically a twenty-seven hundred dollar increase in our rate this year. So I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the quote from Lloyd's for the coming fiscal year.
I, I move to approve that quote.
Okay.
I'll second.
Perfect. Moved and seconded. Any other discussion on this item?
I do have a question. In the title at the top of the sort of shaded section, what does EQSL stand for? It has an asterisk, but I can't find what it means.
It's for earthquake sprinkler valves, which we don't have sprinkler valves, you know, for fire sprinklers. We don't we won't require that coverage.
Any other questions or discussion on this? Okay, hearing them, we'll proceed to a vote. Trustee Andrews?
Aye.
Trustee Capel?
Aye.
Trustee Khan?
Aye.
I vote aye. So that quote is approved. And our next, do we have? Okay, got it. It's the, it's under the next one. All right. So our next two items kind of go together. So items G and H basically were also recommendations that were included in that Public Funding Committee Report, basically in order to do what we need to do to get good polling data and to do all the legal work we need to do to set up the CFD, we need the board to authorize some additional money for both of those contracts. So we'll, we'll start with item G, which is approving an addendum to the agreement between the district and Clifford Moss, which covers that, that increase in the public opinion research. Any questions or discussion on this before we get into motions?
It was a smaller, Katie, it was a smaller two groups they were going to do, as I recall, right?
Yeah, so the original idea was that if we had just one, basically, we were just testing one ballot measure. Like if we were like, well, this is what it is, and this is what it's going to be, then we would poll four hundred people on that ballot measure. But what we're going to be able to do instead is to poll on two price points, basically. So one group of three hundred people will be asked a set of questions, and then another group of three hundred people will be asked exactly the same questions. The only difference between the two is one group will be asked about a ballot measure that represents what functionally our sort of, our floor is, like the lowest amount that we could go to voters and request, and the other will be asked about the ceiling, so the, the higher number.
Right, that was, that was my understanding. Does that, I guess my question is, is that, you may have it in your report, but I didn't see it. Does that change the margin of error at all? Or does it inflate it a little bit for the two smaller groups, or is it about the same?
Um, I'll let Laura chime in on this, but my understanding is our margin of error for each of those two groups is plus or minus 5.7%, which is a pretty, it's a pretty good margin for, for a sample that size. And, and they've, you know, EMC has done a really good job of coming up with a good cross-section of, of likely registered voters. Laura, anything you want to add to that?
That's exactly right. The, the margin of error is plus or minus 5.7%. So it does increase it slightly, but it's still within an okay margin of error by EMC standards.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on that? Okay. Then I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion to approve the addendum to the contract between the district and Clifford Moss.
So move.
Perfect. A second?
I'll second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions on this item? Hearing them, we'll proceed to a roll call vote. Trustee Andrews?
Aye.
Trustee Capel?
Aye.
Trustee Khan?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. So that's unanimously approved. Thank you. And then our next item is quite similar. It is basically an approval of BB&amp;K's proposal to provide special legal counsel related to the formation of the CFD. And I think I can tell you, and I, Betsy, I, I hope you'll agree with me, that this is a legally demanding process, and I am very happy to have legal advice on all of it.
I heartily agree. We need this expertise. It's not, it's not a run-of-the-mill legal services. It's, it's special.
Yeah, and it's, it's not, you can't wing it. You gotta know, you gotta know what we're doing, and Nora and her colleagues certainly have provided a lot of really helpful insights. So we're going to be looking at, again, sort of a ceiling on that of twenty thousand. And hopefully, you know, we'll do everything we can, as per usual, to keep those costs as low as we can.
Katie, can I just ask a question on that? Is this motion that we're voting on, does this include the actual drafting of the ballot measure if we decide to go forward with it, or is that something we'd have to deal with later?
No, the ballot, so that's a great question. The ballot measure is basically already drafted, because one of the things we're going to be doing in the public opinion research, when we're calling up likely voters and asking them what they think, is we're going to be testing the ballot measure. So we may tweak it a little bit, but that's basically wrapped into all of this. So we would already know what that seventy-five-word ballot measure looks like. And once again, I think I can tell you now, having learned a little bit about this, there are a whole lot of rules about how you get to those seventy-five words and what you can and can't say. And so we've had pretty extensive discussions with them on that already. So I would, so when we get to our, our July 27th meeting, and, and if we're voting to go ahead, we would be voting to like approve the ballot measure at that time.
Okay.
Can I just say, for example, even though this is kind of self-evident, we can't say, gee, wouldn't it be a really great idea to XYZ? We, you know, it has to be completely neutral and we, you know, it, it, it's been really interesting to learn about that aspect of it, having, I'm sure a million times all of us voted on such things. It never, I never thought about what went into creating them.
Yeah, it cannot be argumented.
County registrar could even amend it, right?
Say what now?
Theoretically, the county registrar, like they could amend it to a certain extent too, right?
Nora, I'm gonna let you answer that. I don't, I think they can tell us if it's no good, right? But like, that's why we have you guys telling us.
Yeah, so, and so, so my understanding from our attorney that specializes in election law is that if someone challenged it, then, and they decided that it was not written properly, that they would rewrite it.
Got it.
As long as it falls under the requirements and it's not challenged, then it would stand as it's.
Okay.
And that's why we're getting this expertise now, so we do it right the first time.
Right, yep, yep, yep. Thanks, Nora.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or discussions on this?
Just a clarification of what the total amount would be that we're talking about.
So I believe, and Nikki, maybe you can help me on this, I believe we're authorizing a contract not to exceed twenty thousand, but I think we don't know what the billable hours will look like until we get through the next couple of weeks. Is that right?
Correct. And I believe this is to get us through, the twenty thousand would get us through, like, the actual election part of things, then it would be a whole nother thing, once we'd have to like write all of the documents for the bond itself and the formation. But Nora could speak to that, too.
Yeah, this is Nora again. Sorry, I keep going on and off, but this would just be for, through formation and election for the CFD. And then in the letter, we, you know, we said, when it comes to issuing the bonds, which is Mike and Sarah Ari mentioned, would be much later down the road, then we would, depending on the size of the issuance, propose a fee for that at a separate time.
Yeah, I, I just wondered, because there was a ten thousand dollar cost a little farther on, and then there was a thirty, thirty-five hundred dollar cost for, so I just wondered if we needed to bundle the whole, the whole bunch of them into one motion.
So the ten thousand dollar cost, I think Nikki had me make that edit, just to make sure I didn't, we didn't go over a cost of ten thousand dollars prior to the approval
Oh, gotcha.
of the contract at this meeting, since all the resolutions had to be drafted prior to the approval that you're considering now.
Okay.
Great question.
So the motion would be to approve twenty thousand dollars for?
Yeah, the motion would be to approve up to twenty thousand dollars. Or basically, it would be to approve the fee proposal from BB&amp;K to provide special counsel services. Do I hear that motion?
I will move. I will so move, yes.
Okay, and a second?
I'll second that one.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any other discussion at this time? Okay, hearing that, we'll proceed to a vote. Trustee Andrews?
Aye.
Trustee Capel?
Aye.
Trustee Khan?
Aye.
I vote aye. So that is unanimously approved as well. Okay, how's everybody doing? Quick check? Good? All right. Let's move into our CFD resolution. So these guys start on page 152 of your package, and basically, we've got three resolutions. We're going to vote on each of them separately, but they all kind of go together. So we've got 2020, oh four, oh five, and oh six. Before we jump into like making motions and all of that, I wonder, Nora, if you could just give us a very brief precis about which, about what each resolution does.
Sure. So I think Nikki's report lays it out pretty well, but under the Melrose Act, that's what, how you would form legally the CFD. It requires the, the local agency, which would be the library district in this case, prior to considering the formation of a CFD, to adopt what's called local goals and policies concerning the use of the act. And the provisions of the act set forth certain requirements. So that's what you'll see in Resolution 2020-04, is just the adoption of these local goals and policies. It's attached as Exhibit A to that resolution. I can walk through those local goals and policies, or in the interest of time, we can, I guess, move on to what each of the resolutions do, and then we can go back if there's any specific questions. So first, you would adopt Resolution 2020-04, which adopts those local goals and policies attached as Exhibit A. And then Resolution 2020-05, that's your resolution declaring the intention to form the CFD. So that's the first step in the process. And the act sets forth the requirements that need to be included in that resolution. So first, you'll be adopting a boundary map of the CFD, which is the boundaries of the library district, and that's attached as Exhibit A to that resolution. You will be declaring the library district's intention to establish the CFD and levy a special tax on property within the boundaries of that CFD. It will say the, the legal name of the CFD, which is Alta Dina Library District, Community Facilities District, 2020-1, Facilities and Services. It will describe on, and that is what we briefly mentioned before, this, the list of facilities and services that are able to be funded with the special tax. That's listed on Exhibit B to the resolution. It will provide, it provides the rate, method of apportionment, and manner of collection of the special tax, and the rate and method of apportionment. Katie went into great detail in her report, and then also NBS's memo to the board on the different options. So the rate and method of apportionment is attached as Exhibit C to that resolution, 2020-05. It sets the time and place for a public hearing on the establishment of the CFD, which is set for the July 27th meeting at 5:00 PM. And then it describes the proposed voting procedure, which is basically just under the Melrose Act, and this isn't, it's if there's a twelve, less than twelve registered voters within the boundaries of the CFD, the act provides that the election shall be by the landowners, and if there's greater than twelve, which obviously in this case there are, it will be by the registered voters. So that's just one of the requirements of the act, that it described the voting procedures under the act. And then it directs the preparation of a report describing the facilities and services to be made in, in connection with the CFD. And that report will become part of the public record at the hearing, and NBS would be providing that report. And then Resolution 2020-06 is declaring the necessity to incur a bonded indebtedness of the CFD. And that's another requirement under the act. It's, it's like a two-step process for each part. So there's what we call ROI, the resolution of intention. That's 2020-05. And then that's kind of sets forth the beginning of forming the CFD. And then in order to issue bonds, you almost have to do like an ROI for the bond portion. So it's a resolution declaring that it's necessary to issue bonds for the CFD. And that resolution declares the necessity to incur the indebtedness. It states the purpose for which the debt would be incurred, and in this case, it would be to finance the facilities. And then it provides the amount, amount of the proposed debt, which we talked about earlier. It sets a ceiling on the amount of debt that you can issue. So in this case, we've set that at twenty-four million dollars. And you can always issue less, but you can never issue more. And then it also sets for the time and place for another public hearing. So it's technically two public hearings, and you can consolidate them into one at the July 27th meeting, but separate notices need to be posted, one for the public hearing on the resolution of intention, and one for the public hearing on the resolution declaring the necessity to incur a bonded indebtedness on the, you know, debt authorization. So those are the three resolutions that you'll be considering tonight. All of them conform to the requirements in the Melrose Act. So I'm happy to take any specific questions on points of them. Hopefully, that wasn't too lengthy or boring.
Thank you, Nora. And I'll say that as a committee, we spent a fair amount of time reviewing each of these documents with all of our, you know, team of consultants and everybody together. So this is a, this is a complicated process, and it's, yep, yet another data point about why it's great to have people who are experts in this. Any specific questions on any of these resolutions? Like I said, we'll vote on each of them separately, but I want to give everybody a chance to, you know, get any clarifications or ask any questions or make any comments they might have.
They're all intent resolutions, right? Not that they don't bind to say anything, it sounds like, so.
Yeah, I mean, technically, oh four approves the goals and, and policies. So it's not technically a resolution of intent, but it's, it's kind of the same thing. It's like saying,
Right.
here's what we, here's what we care about.
And under 2020-04, the goals and policies also provide that they can be amended, supplemented, or waived at the board's discretion. So in the event you were to form another community facilities district and needed to change any of those, you could always do that. So it, you know, you are adopting it, but it, it can always be changed.
Okay, thanks.
Be flexible. Great.
I would just want to double check. I think we would have heard, but I just want to make sure that there isn't any pending. that there isn't any pending public comment at this point.
Great question. I haven't seen anything, but Chloe, do we have anything?
No.
Okay. All right. And again, there's, you know, hopefully, we'll have some, we'll have some folks let us know what they think when we do this whole public hearing portion as well in July, but I want to make sure that we get the chance to hear from anybody who's got any, anything they want us to know about now. Thank you, Betsy. It's a good reminder. Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion to adopt Resolution 2020 dash oh four, which adopts the local goals and policies for the community facilities district.
I so move.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Thank you. We'll proceed, oh, wait. Any discussion? I got excited. All right. I think hearing that, we'll proceed to a roll call vote. Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Capel.
Aye.
Trustee Khan.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so that resolution is unanimously approved. That brings us to Resolution 2020 dash oh five. And so once again, I'm going to ask for a motion to adopt that resolution, which is a resolution of intention to establish the Alta Dina Library District, Community Facilities District, number 2020 dash one.
I so move.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any other discussion on this item? Okay, hearing that, we'll take a vote. Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Capel.
Aye.
Trustee Khan.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So that resolution of intention is unanimously adopted. And finally, we come to Resolution 2020 dash oh six. I am scrolling as fast as I can. All right, 2020 dash oh six, a resolution of intention to incur bonded indebtedness. So I will ask for a motion to adopt that resolution as well.
So moved.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Any other discussion on this item? Okay, hearing that, we'll proceed to a vote. Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Capel.
Aye.
Trustee Khan.
Aye.
I vote aye as well, so that resolution is unanimously adopted. Fantastic, guys, we did it. It was really good.
Now we have five months of campaigning to do it.
Yeah, right. Well, now we have to, now we have to find out what everybody thinks, and then hopefully, they, they agree with us. It's a pretty good idea. All right, let's take a break here before we move into our appointment process. Before we do that, as you guys saw in the board package, we're gonna talk to each of our candidates in a randomly assigned order. So I'm going to go ahead and assign that order now with my like very high-tech random selection. And that way, we'll know what order we go in, and then we'll take, let's say like a five, 10-minute recess, give everybody a chance to not have a blood clot in their legs from sitting for some
Sounds good.
All right, sounds good. All right, here's the order. We'll go in. We will speak to Mr. Turvalon first. And then Mr. Amy, followed by Ms. Kwan. Ms. Wilkerson. And that means we'll finish up with Ms. Butler. So that's the order we'll go, and we come back from our break. But I'm going to go ahead and say at 7:35, let's take, let's take a 10-minute recess. Let's go wild. All right, so we'll reconvene in 10 minutes at 7:45, and then we'll proceed to the appointment for our vacancy at that time.
Katie, we don't need to get off and dial in again, right?
No, 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 you can just, you can just chill. Yeah, you want to turn off your camera, that's fine, but yeah.
Okay.
Perfect. All right, I'll see everybody in 10 minutes.
And I will just say, if Velma Butler is watching over the YouTube, to please check your email, or just try to rejoin the meeting. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hey, Jervy.
Hey, your day. How's it going?
You know I had to just check that, right? The wonders of technology, right? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, there you go.
There you are, man. I'm gonna, I gotta scarf down this dinner, so I'm gonna actually mute myself again, because I don't want you hearing my nom-nom sounds, right? See you in a minute, man.
All right, do we have everybody basically ready to come back?
We have not been able to get in touch with Velma.
Okay.
So not, I mean, I think she was last, so I'm going to leave the meeting unlocked for now and monitor in case she comes into the waiting room.
Okay. Do we have a phone number for her?
We've tried. The only phone numbers we have, one is disconnected, and the other just didn't go through, so I'm going to just keep
Okay.
open and I'll monitor.
Okay, thank you. Well, hopefully, hopefully, we get her back online here.
And I've emailed her twice, too.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
All right, so we're gonna come back from our recess at 7:46 PM. So we'll reconvene. We come now to our last item of new business, Item L, which is certainly one of the most, you know, important things that we do as a board, which is to appoint a trustee to fill a vacancy. So as you'll all know, at the last meeting in May, Trustee McMullins resigned her position, and we certainly appreciate her many, many years of service to this library in, in a variety of forums, certainly on the board, but also on the foundation. So at that point, we posted a notice of vacancy, and that nomination process was open until June 12th. And all of the candidates that we have tonight have been informed ahead of time about how this process will work, and I just want to go over it real quickly to make sure we're all on the same page. So what's going to happen is we'll go through in that random order that we talked about 10 minutes ago. And so each candidate will be given three minutes, and I've got my, got my timer, so I have three minutes to talk about themselves and, you know, anything they'd like for us to know. And then we're going to ask everybody the same three questions. And again, those questions appear on page 163 of your packet, so I'll ask everybody the same three questions. And they've, they've seen those already ahead of time. We'll hear from everybody. And then I will ask for a motion to proceed to a roll call vote on appointment. We'll get a second, and then we'll pause there, open up the floor for discussion and debate. And then after we feel like we're in a good spot, we'll go ahead to a roll call vote. And one applicant has to receive three out of four votes, so we need a majority vote. If nobody gets three votes, we'll open the floor back up, we'll talk some more, and we'll kind of rinse and repeat until we get to a roll call vote where at least three votes go to a single candidate, that person will be appointed to the board, and they will take office effective immediately.
Can, can you, can I just ask a clarifying question? So we go through and vote on all five candidates, or do we take nominations to do?
No, so what'll, that's a great question. So what'll happen is I'll say, you know, after we've heard from everybody, I'll say, okay, I'd like to have a motion to appoint a trustee, and that'll be seconded, and then we'll go through a roll call. So like, it'll, I'll say, you know, trustee Andrews, and Terry will say, I vote for Mr. Smith, and I'll say trustee Capel, and he'll say, I vote for Ms. Jones, and, you know, you don't have anybody named any of those names. And then we'll go through, and we'll see where we fall basically after the first round. It may be that we, you know, having discussed it, are all you know, the same place, maybe we're not, and then we'll, we'll keep kind of going through that process.
Katie, did you say that selection of the trustee to start is also a random event?
Oh, I was going to do it alphabetically, but we can, we can do it randomly.
It doesn't matter. I just wondered what the procedure might be. Okay.
Yeah, let's be consistent. You're always first, because we do it in alphabetical order, so.
Okay.
Get ready.
I'm going to change my last name.
No pressure.
Katie, I have a question, because I didn't see it anywhere, and I wonder if it was part of the application process that all of the candidates know that there's, that the seat that they're applying for comes up for reelection, and so we would be appointing them for the period between now and, and the end of the year, but that they would need to run in November, on the November ballot in order to keep that seat.
Yeah, that's correct, and that was, that was included in the notice, so that was definitely spelled out, but it's definitely worth repeating again. So yes, this appointment is being made now, and whoever is appointed to the seat will hold that seat until December 10th.
December, yeah.
Right, so I think it's the first, it's the first Friday in December, or whatever, whatever the language of the, of the establishing act is, when newly elected people are sworn into office. So whoever's appointed tonight certainly is welcome to run to, you know, retain their seat. They don't have to, they can. And I would also say to all of our candidates who are with us tonight, you know, we've got three seats up on the, on the ballot, so if you know, you are not successful in, in being appointed tonight, I sincerely hope that you will consider, you know, running in November, because a robust election is, is to the benefit of everybody in the district. Any other questions on procedure? Any other questions on procedure? Okay, good, then I think we're ready to go ahead and start, so our first candidate for appointment is Jervy Turvalon. And so if you'd go ahead and turn on your video and your audio, sir, we'll start with you.
Okay.
Perfect, all right, I'm gonna put three minutes on the clock, and you're welcome to, you know, tell us anything that you'd like for us to know.
Um, okay. I have loved libraries ever since I was a kid, there was one, I grew up in South LA, and the library is where I like to hang out, and I won my first writing contest there. Later on, I went on to UCSB and studied with a guy named Marvin Mudrick, who wrote for Harper's Magazine for years, the Hudson, actually. And, and he really made it, writing, the literary life seemed like something I wanted to live, to do, and I did, and I continued to write, and went to UC Irvine's MFA program, and I studied with Thomas Caneli, who wrote Schindler's List, I've written a number of novels, and I, I guess because of my literary passions, that libraries have become even more important to me, and the Altadena Library is a place that I take my kids to, that I like to spend time at, and I think it's one of the cultural institutions in Altadena that, you know, is one of our best and most important, and I would just love to see it grow. I started Lit Fest Pasadena with Jonathan Gold and Larry Wilson some years ago, now we're the second largest literary festival in California, and the most diverse. And I think we need to have, the library should have the same sort of thing, a Lit Fest Altadena, or maybe we just figure out how to combine those things. We need to, the library needs to insinuate itself even more so in the schools, because as a former high school teacher, I teach at UCSB now, writing literature and stuff. They're not teaching literature in the schools, and we have to be the emissaries to help teachers figure out how to use classic literature and contemporary literature and diverse literature in the schools, and I think the Altadena Library could be instrumental in helping to do those and accomplish those things. How much time am I left?
You have a minute and nine seconds.
A minute and nine seconds. Also, I was a Shanghai Writers Fellow, my wife's a passionate reader, and, you know, she grew up in China, and one of the things I'm interested in doing is creating greater connections between in this country literary scene, so that's one thing I'm. Okay, so anyway, so I was thinking of trying to figure out how to get the Shanghai writers here to California and to Altadena to talk about what they do and their writing.
Thank you, yeah, that's good, you don't have to use the whole three minutes, you just have up, you have up to three minutes, so.
Okay. So, do we save our time, or do we leave now?
So now, so now what we're gonna do is I'm gonna ask you those three questions, and you're gonna respond to those, and then after we, after we finish those three questions, definitely please hang around, but just, again, turn off your, your video and your.
Okay.
We've got some, some dings happening.
Went on there and I don't know how to get the timing off, okay.
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 Good, all right, so question number one, and again, all the candidates are gonna be asked the same questions, and everybody had a chance to see these ahead of time. So serving as a trustee means holding a critical role as a public official in making sure you're available not only to attend and participate in regular and special meetings, but also to perform committee work, to review and comment on items throughout the month, and to participate publicly in civic events on behalf of the library, although, of course, that looks a little bit different right now. How do you plan to balance your life and other demands on your time with these obligations?
Because I'm a writer, and I have a half-time teaching position at UCSB that I do on Zoom, I actually have a lot of time structured so that I can do the things I need to do, but it's very flexible, and I can accommodate the kinds of demands that the library needs, needs of me. I don't think that would be a very difficult, very difficult situation for me to handle, my daughter's in preschool, my older daughters are in college, so, and also I have a great partner, my wife.
Okay, thank you. Question number two, the Board of Trustees has a critical role in overseeing and prioritizing the budget for the district. Please describe any prior experience you have with budget, with reading sets of financials for either public or private organization, and with fiscal oversight.
As a person who scribbles, I actually don't deal with those things very much, but again, my wife, it's an executive at Coke, Coca-Cola, she does all the time, and I think that if I were on the board, she would be very much a great asset in making it possible for me to understand the kinds of things that I would probably, whether I'd be compelled to do as being on the board.
Okay, thank you. And question number three, what do you think the role of the Altadena Library District is in our community? What do you think it does well, and what do you think could be improved?
I think the Altadena Library does many, many things well. I think that it's welcoming, that it's diverse, and it's a very pleasant place to spend time. I would think that possibly what it, it needs to expand, I think physically, I think that particularly the smaller library, I forgot the name of it, but that one definitely needs to expand, I think there's just a great need for the library, because we don't really have any other institution like that, that acts as a kind of anchor, that anchors the community, so I would just, I would just hope that the library becomes even more of a center for culture and also for civic events.
Okay, thank you so much, well, we really appreciate your application and your, your thoughtfulness and all of your responses to our questions. So, like I said, I'd ask you to please stay on the, stay on the meeting, hang around, and just go ahead and turn off your video and your audio.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, perfect, that brings us to our next candidate, Renee Amy, so Renee, if you would, just turn on your video and your audio, perfect.
Hi, good evening, board members and library staff, community members, and it turns out several of my neighbors are here this evening. Jervy, as you heard on the break, hi, good to see you again, Camila, good to see you here as part of this event. It turns out that 80% of the applicants are from my neighborhood, next door, right? You know, who thought that next door would be the, the great thing that it is and bring people together the way it has, but it has, and what I think, and it's important to point out, that every single applicant tonight is from Northwest Altadena, and that's something different, and that's something to celebrate, I think, given the fact that most people that I've talked to in the community had no idea that this position was open. Now, I'd like to first off, though, make a couple of corrections on the resume that I sent in, I modified it for this position to highlight my background in, and knowledge and certifications in the construction industry, building industry, building inspection, knowledge thereof, et cetera. And it turns out, to my surprise, I left a bunch of stuff out, I think there, it's either 11 or 13 certifications from the International Code Council that I listed. They, the day after I sent it in, they sent me notification that they'd awarded me a few more, so I think I'm up to 19 different certifications, meaning that I have more knowledge about building, construction, safety issues, energy efficiency, et cetera, than most building inspectors throughout the state of California. I also highlighted this time around my involvement in volunteer organizations and civic groups, things from the Altadena Rotary Club, of which I'm a member, to the things that are currently on hiatus, that I sort of miss the most. Altadena Food Truck Fridays, for which I list myself as the ringmaster, that's a community building event with the idea of not only bringing together community members as sort of an offshoot, if you will, or a supplement to the other community building events that are in our community, but also to raise money and awareness for, of, and for school on wheels. I've been a volunteer tutor down there on Skid Row for a year until that went on hiatus. I've been a volunteer tutor in the Pasadena Unified School District through their African-American Parents Council's Math Power Hour program, while that was available and into the year until the schools were shut down. I put on the list the fact that I'm involved with other organizations, including the American Red Cross. For them, I hold a total of four different certified, tested for volunteer positions. I'm an ambassador with the Nobel Peace Prize nominated group Shelterbox USA.
Renee, I'm so sorry, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to pause here for a second, yep, you're up.
Cool, thank you.
You're back.
Okay, hit me with your questions, please.
Here we go, they're gonna be a big surprise, number one.
Never heard them before.
Exactly. So, serving as a trustee means holding a critical role as a public official and making sure you're available not only to attend and participate in regular and special meetings, but also to commute, perform committee work, to review and comment on items throughout the month, and to participate publicly in civic events on behalf of the library, although, of course, that looks a little bit different right now. How do you plan to balance your life and the other demands on your time with these obligations?
The answer to that is I'm a guy who does best and performs best when busy, and I'm a great multitasker, as you might get the sense from looking at my resume. I'm not a resume builder person, I'm a person who actually gets things done, so that during this meeting this evening, while you all were discussing other items, I was on a phone call with my CASA kid, the at-risk youth that I help, as he goes through the dependency court system. I like to get involved in multiple activities, because I'm able to then percolate and focus on those as well, that's part of my background and training as an attorney, where the thought process allows me to deep dive into areas and issues that others might not. So, the summation of the answer to your question is, I'm really good at doing many things at once and making time when I need to.
Thank you. All right, question number two, the Board of Trustees has a critical role in overseeing and prioritizing the budget for the district. So please describe for us any prior experience you have with budgets, with sets of financials for either public or private organizations, and with fiscal oversight.
It might be reasonable to say that I am best known in the community over the last 25 to 30 years as somebody who's done exactly that, headlines, media attention, op-eds, horrible rumors about me, et cetera, because I took apart the budget of a large read, or local agency, and sliced that onion about 18 different ways and found out where money was being wasted, where laws were being broken, and where the public interest was not being served. And I've done that not only on that large scale of an agency with a quarter billion dollar per year budget, but also with smaller organizations, nonprofits that I am part of, as a board member, for example, I don't wanna say they've done anything wrong, because they haven't, but the Altadena Community Garden, I've been on the board of that organization for several years now, and work to create the budget for that, so I'm, I'm pretty good at that.
Thanks. All right, question number three, what do you think the role of the Altadena Library District is in our community? What do you think it does well, and what do you think could be improved?
I think, as, as Jervy said, with his halo, and I think he, he should get dinged a point for that, but Altadena, people get confused, people think Altadena is a city, and as you all know, it is not, it's an unincorporated area in LA County. And we have a community center, we have a fancy park at Loma Alta, we have the amphitheater at Farnsworth where community events are held, but we don't have a city hall, we don't have a central core location for community activities in our community. And so to me, the, the Altadena Library District serves many functions, I mean, it should do everything the ALA says, right? It should provide as much reading as possible for as many readers, we can look at everything it's supposed to do as a library district. But in the case of Altadena, it's more than that, it's a place where things happen, it's a place where those fall and winter concerts are so incredibly important to the community as a gathering location, because outside of, say, churches, we don't have that. Now, the, the Altadena Library District does a whole lot of things really well. Under a prior library director, we went from an inward-facing library district where people had to go to the library to do things, and, and it was a quiet place, and, and, you know, the, the traditional library, to what's known, as you all know, as an outward-facing entity. And that process has continued to grow, but I believe that really needs to, to happen more, and part of the responsibility for that is the board. Part of the responsibility of the board is to be, of the board members, the individual board members, is to be a cheerleader. And honestly, I would, I would point fingers around the, the virtual room here and say things like, hey, I haven't heard a whole lot from any of you about how important and wonderful the library is, I haven't seen, maybe I've missed them, any op-eds in the local newspapers. You folks are talking about a new parcel tax, if you look at what happened recently with PUSD and their work with Pasadena Now, we had a statement from the, they, the Pasadena Now, had a statement from the superintendent, followed almost immediately by an op-ed from a school board member about the importance of doing unto others what you would have them do unto you, and then immediately after, thereafter, the announcement that they're going to seek, or talking about seeking an additional parcel tax. So there's a lot that individual board members can do, and that whole cheerleading aspect of things is critically important. The other element of the board is to ensure that you have a well-rounded, which is gonna happen tonight, because you're gonna have somebody from Northwest Altadena, but a well-rounded range of expertise. I mentioned I'm a lawyer, I'm a contractor, I'm an active volunteer in myriad different arenas, and obviously, I'm somebody who cares deeply about the community. And I'll leave it at that, so you're not here all night.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your application, thank you for being here, and same kinda deal, please, please stick around. We appreciate it. Okay, fantastic. All right, so that brings us to our third applicant, Kaitlin Kwan, so Kaitlin, if you'd switch on your video and audio.
Hi. Hello.
All right, so we're gonna do the same thing, you've got three minutes, go for it.
All right, my name's Kaitlin Kwan, and I'd like to first acknowledge we're living and working on the ancestral unceded territory of the Gabberlinow, Tawanga peoples. I apologize if that was mentioned, I just didn't hear it, and I don't see it on, didn't see it on documentation. I'm a white, able-bodied, cis woman, I live in Altadena, my preferred gender pronouns are she/her/hers. My former public school teacher, working in marginalized communities, and current volunteer counselor in Watts, and current private practice therapist in Pasadena. I wanna thank the board and director Winslow for your service to our community, it's really been a pleasure joining this meeting and spending more time reviewing Altadena Library District's creative response to quarantine, seems to be very inclusive and equitable, still getting books into children's hands, and particularly love the bilingual activities on YouTube. I was also very pleased to see that unlike the strategic plan which mentions equity, or sorry, equality, or the idea that treating everyone the same will lead to fairness, but actually perpetuates white supremacy, that now the library was using in their Black Lives Matter statement, the term equity, which of course is about giving what people, what is needed, so that all can succeed, and acknowledging barriers for non-dominant groups, both systemic, institutional, and otherwise. At this time, I would like to withdraw my application from consideration, not due to limited interest, but order, in order to advocate for one of the central tenets of being anti-racist and the Black Lives Movement, which is elevating black voices and people, the voices of people of color in our community. Altadena is not an all-white community, and thus our board must not be either. Sometimes we can use our white privilege to advocate for marginalized communities, and sometimes we need to acknowledge by, that we need to step back. And I also, in my effort to be more anti-racist, I would like to note that, that the term master is, carries a cultural baggage that is harmful, and I, I would, I would say that's a ding, and I humbly suggest perhaps the use of leader. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, we note your withdrawal, and certainly thank you for your, for your interest. Okay, well, thank you, we note your withdrawal, and certainly thank you for your, for your interest and for your consideration, and for being here with us tonight. All right, then that brings us to our fourth candidate, Camila Wilkerson.
Hello.
Hello.
Good evening, thank you so much for this opportunity. Okay, my three minutes starting.
If you're ready, then absolutely.
I am ready. So my name is Camila Wilkerson, and I am, I've been, I'm born and raised in Altadena, been here all of my life. I am a marriage and family therapist, and I've been employed with the same child welfare organization since nineteen ninety-eight. I am currently the Assistant Vice President of Clinical Compliance, and I work to make sure that our staff are working toward the highest legal, ethical, and business standards for our consumers, providing quality care to our consumers. I would be honored to serve the community, the Altadena community, I love this community, it was very important to me to, once I left for college, to come back to this community and buy a home in this community and invest in this community. And so, when I saw the opening for the Board of Trustees, I thought this would be an interesting and unique way to possibly give back to the community, doing something, or working for an organization that means a lot to me. As I mentioned in my letter of interest, I, I grew up in the Altadena Library, literally, in the Altadena Library, so. It is, oh, it's a, it's a great love of mine, and I think that is, oh, I, I do have some experience, I'd like to serve on different boards, not many, but that I find something interesting in, and usually they relate to mental health and mental well-being. So this will be something different for me, I also have been on the board of our local mosque in Altadena for the past, I think I want to say fifteen years, so that is something that's also, that I'm also passionate about. Thank you.
I have to unmute myself. I was gonna say you have a minute, you have a minute remaining, if there's anything else you want to share, but you certainly, okay, perfect. All right, let's move into our questions. So again, you'll have heard these before, but question number one. Serving as a trustee means holding a critical role as a public official, and making sure that you're available not only to attend and participate in regular and special meetings, but also to perform committee work, to review and comment on items throughout the month, and to participate publicly in civic events on behalf of the library, although of course that looks a little bit different right now. How do you plan to balance your life and other demands on your time with those obligations?
Thank you. So truthfully, as mentioned in the question, things do look a lot different right now, given the current health crisis. I think my biggest challenge would be that I have a four-year-old, a very energetic four-year-old. However, I feel like I do have a really strong village. Of course, my, my spouse is, excuse me, here and a very active parent, as well as we are blessed to have my mother live with us, and so I bring that up to say that I, it will be challenging, you know, given that I do work a full-time job, and I will be working from home for the foreseeable future. But I do pride myself on doing what I say that I'm going to do and what I can do. So I think I'll, I would plan to lean very heavily on advanced planning as much as I can, as well as boundaries, I'm very working toward making sure that I have very strong personal and professional boundaries, so that I can have the bandwidth to attend to projects that I am either assigned or volunteer for. So I feel like I'm going to plan to efficiently, you know, prioritize and attend to projects by making sure that I acknowledge what I can and can't do, and, and hold firm to those boundaries.
Okay, thanks. Question number two. The Board of Trustees has a critical role in overseeing and prioritizing the budget for the district. So please describe for us any prior experience you have with budgets, with reading sets of financials for either public or private organizations, and with fiscal oversight.
Yes, to be honest, I have very little formal budgetary experience, I'm just gonna put that out there. My background and interests and strong suit really is in the work that I do in quality management, compliance, risk management. That being said, I will say that I have been on the, the board, like I said, of our local mosque for the, for many years, and I've collaborated a lot with the treasurer of the organization. And I've learned a lot from him and his experience, taking that community from small, sometimes negative operating costs to burgeoning and positive operating costs, and so I'm really proud to have seen that growth over, over the years. I've observed him doing this by maintaining a focus on really the bottom line and making logical decisions that are not impulsive, which I really appreciate, and, and based on information and facts. We also operate very well using something from our FAI system called mutual consultation. So financial decisions are made, not in isolation, but in strong collaboration with others. So if I, you know, receive this nomination, I hope to learn from you all and, you know, do that in collaboration with you.
Hey, thank you. And third question, what do you think the role of the Altadena Library District is in our community? What do you think it does well, and what do you think could be improved?
Sorry, so as I mentioned earlier and in my application, I love the Altadena Library. The physical library itself was a safe place for me, like physically, growing up. And I think that libraries are a path to literacy and, and just love for reading, which again, I got from, you know, sitting literally sometimes all day in the library, you know, reading books and, and, you know, planning to check out books. So I think that it's really important to have community libraries that will foster that love of reading and literacy in our communities, especially our communities of color. I also think that libraries provide a source of access, and so when I say that, I, just gonna speak from personal experience again, I grew up using the Altadena Library for a place to do schoolwork on the computer, not having a computer at home. Even in college, I would, you know, do a lot of work in the library, I learned about passports in the Altadena Library. I learned about filing taxes in the Altadena Library, and they used to have, I don't know if they still have, you know, every tax season, the different forms that you could come and pick up and, and file your taxes. So the Library District is a way for our community to learn about and access things that they may not typically come into contact with, either in their families, or schools, or communities. So I really appreciate that about the Library District. Excuse me. In terms of what can be improved, I think that, I think it's being done, but I would love to to offer my expertise and, and energy and outreach efforts. So, for example, I was really, really thrilled this year when Helen Kate reached out to our local mosque to do, you know, some outreach work and outreach events, and, you know, we planned to do some, some events, but of course we got waylaid by COVID. But I think that it was a great opportunity to engage the community, and I'd like to see more of that. Additionally, as a mental health professional, I'd love to be able to participate in and boost outreach and events related to reducing stigma around mental health challenges, and just helping individuals improve their social, emotional, and spiritual well-being and wholeness.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So please, please stay with us, and we'll definitely proceed to our last candidate if we have her. Do we have any update on Ms. Butler?
No, we have emailed a couple times, we tried calling a couple numbers, and I, we have not gotten any update.
Okay, then we're gonna just move, move on, that's unfortunate, and I'm, I'm sorry to hear it, but I certainly want to take an opportunity before we proceed to our first round of voting. Once again, just to really thank all of the, all the candidates who applied for taking the time to think about the library, to send in your thoughts, to, to share them with us, to be here with us tonight. We really, really appreciate it, and again, we hope you'll, you'll stay involved regardless of the, the outcome of tonight's meeting, whether that be thinking about running as a candidate in November, or coming alongside the library to help with any number of the projects that have you, as you heard, are, there's not a shortlist.
We also have friends in the foundation.
We have the friends, Granny would be right here saying, join the friends. And so on her behalf, I'm gonna say, join the friends, if you haven't joined the friends, join the friends. All right, so we're gonna go to our first round of voting. So in order to do that, I'd like to ask for a motion to proceed to an appointment, and a second, please.
So moved.
Okay. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, perfect. Moved and seconded, so what we'll do now is, we'll do a first round, just to see where we, where we fall. Normally we would do this by a ballot, but we're gonna do it by a voice vote, because we can't do a ballot in all our different houses. So as I call each trustee, just go ahead and tell me who your vote is for, for appointment, please. Trustee Andrews.
I would vote for Camila Wilkerson.
Okay. Trustee Kapal.
I vote for Camila Wilkerson as well.
Okay, trustee Khan.
I vote for Camila Wilkerson as well.
Well, this may be a very rapid process, because I too am gonna vote for Camila, so that was easy. Camila, congratulations, you have been unanimously appointed as a trustee. So thank you, that's awesome, round of applause for our new trustee.
And thank you, everyone, I think it says a lot about the work that this board has been able to accomplish in the last eighteen months, that we got five amazing candidates willing to take this work on, so.
That's right.
Everybody.
Absolutely.
I agree, thanks everybody for coming and putting your name forward, it really means a lot.
Here, here.
And if I may, I would, I would echo the, the earlier urge that, that you consider running anyway, in the election, because there's no shortage of work to do and people that we need to do it. So we're gratified that you care enough and hope that you'll stay involved.
That's it, that's absolutely right. So Camila, if you would, go ahead and turn your video and audio back on, so we can have you here for the last little bit of our meeting, congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate it, thank you so much.
Thank you for, for applying, and like, like my colleague said, thank you to all of our applicants for being so outstanding. So we will, Nikki and I will be in touch in the next day or so about next steps, and making sure you get, you know, up to speed on all the fun parts of being a trustee, like knowing how the Brown Act works, and procedure and, and all that jazz, but we'll get you, we'll get you wrapped in as quickly as we can, because as you'll have heard tonight, there's a lot of stuff going on, so we want to make sure you're looped in, and that we have a chance to answer any questions you have, or, you know, make, make available any resources you might, you might need.
Thank you.
Of course, okay, so.
Hey, before, before we move on, can I just ask, because I remember when this happened to me.
Yes.
The thing that happened right away was that I got sworn in, how is that gonna happen?
That's a great question, and I don't have an answer to that, because we have to do it in person. Usually you have to like sign that form, and it has to be notarized, so I don't know, but I think that we will find out from our legal counsel.
Great, okay.
Yeah, because you're absolutely right, normally you get sworn in, and then you sign the thing, but how we, how we do that in a socially-distanced way, I have no idea. So we're gonna find that out. All right, so that brings us to item nine of our agenda, announcements and planning. A9A, there's no correspondence that I'm aware of. So that takes us to item B, proposed future agenda items. Certainly, we have a number of things to cover in the coming months, and certainly a number of, a number of decisions to make before the end of July. So I'd like to, at this point, sort of feel out everybody's schedule on whether or not a special meeting on the Monday before our regular meeting would be doable. So if we were looking at, for example, 5:00 PM on July twentieth, the thought is that maybe we could, we could displace as much business that doesn't have to be conducted at a regular meeting, that's, you know, reports and everything else to that day, so that we can, we can devote more time on the twenty-seventh to all of our potential ballot measure questions.
I'm, I'm available, sorry, Terry, I'm available that day, I do have a question, which is, are, are we sure that that's okay to do? To move our regular monthly business a week early?
So there's, there's some, there's some business that has to be conducted at a regular meeting, and some business that doesn't. So the idea is anything that doesn't have to be done at a regular meeting will scooch over. Anything that does, obviously will handle a regular meeting. Similarly, if there are action items, it might be possible to do like reports and discussion and all of that as information only, so that we can kind of have any conversations we need to. Otherwise, the concern is that, you know, our regular meeting on the twenty-seventh might be super, super long, and in combination with a public hearing, that's not, that's not super welcoming for folks, and it also is exhausting, so.
Yeah, we'll do the homework of figuring out what we can move.
Yeah, yeah, but just as a, as an option, does the twentieth work for everybody at 5:00 PM?
It won't, it won't work for me.
It won't.
No, I'll, I'll be gone, I'm on a backpacking trip that entire week, so the, the earliest I could do it would be Friday, the twenty-fourth.
Got it, okay. Could you do anything in the week prior, like that week of the thirteenth?
Yes.
Okay, so if we maybe looked at, like Thursday or Friday of that week, because I'd like to have everybody, if we can, what about, what about Thursday or Friday evening? So that's either the sixteenth or the seventeenth.
Hold on a second, okay?
Okay, yeah. And we don't have to decide right now, it's just a little more.
No matter what, Katie.
Say what now?
This far out, it's, they all work for me, I just, I'll just have to block it out of my schedule.
Okay.
Both the sixteenth and the seventeenth work for me, Katie.
Okay, Camila, any conflicts for you? Okay, no, all right.
Getting you right, right into it, Camila.
That's it. I see.
Ground running.
Yep.
That's what we do here.
I feel like Betsy probably got the worst of that one.
I think that's probably right.
I didn't know, when I was at my meeting, that if whoever got chosen was gonna like step right up and like sit at the front and start voting. I mean, I voted on stuff that first time, crazy.
Yeah, there's a reason we put.
I know, right. So Nikki, how soon will Camila have an email address so she can start getting bombarded with all of you?
Well, we'll get that set up tomorrow.
So I had to check the trustee family calendar there. And you're talking about Friday, the seventeenth or eighteenth, sixteenth or seventeenth.
Yeah, so Thursday or Friday.
Yeah, I could do either one of those.
Okay, great, well, if both of those options work, Nikki, let's, um, let's look at what we need to do in terms of, you know, reports and, and everything else, and make a determination on that within the next day or so.
Okay.
And we'll send, we'll send out an email to everybody, we'll BCC everybody. But I suspect, I kind of suspect we might do Thursday, just because 5:00 PM on a Friday is a little bit rough.
Yeah.
Realistically. I mean, I know, I know we're all working from home, but still, like, that's a lot. So we'll, we'll send you, like I said, we'll send an announcement about that special meeting, and we'll figure out what we can handle there and what needs to be handled on the twenty-seventh. Other, and, and I know we went through a whole list of stuff that's gonna appear on future agendas, including STRMA training, Betsy's gonna come back and talk to us about that. Any other requests or proposed future agenda items that you guys would like to see included either on that special meeting or at our regular meeting on the twenty-seventh?
It's not some, it's not a future agenda item, but just, Katie, before we adjourn, I just wanted to say, I know that list of kind of community leaders that have been identified that you.
Yeah.
Committee, that's a huge list, I just want to put it out there, if, if the subcommittee. If, if the subcommittee needs help with getting through that list, feel free to reach out to me. I know Terry offered as well.
Thank you. Yeah, we definitely will. The sort of the plan on that, just so you're aware, is we've, we've sort of compiled everybody we could think of with the, with the idea that whether or not we can get to them before the feasibility stage ends, we're gonna want to talk to them regardless. So I guarantee you that we will ask for your assistance on that, on that process sooner or later. Hundred percent.
Very good.
Yeah, yep, yep. Yeah, and thank, thank you also for, for including people. We're gonna try to make it as, as comprehensive as possible. And Camila will get your input as well. Yeah, yeah, one of the many things that you'll, you'll get briefed on and we'll, we'll talk through. All right, any other proposed future agenda items that we need to include? I think Nikki's board is probably full of stuff. So I think we'll have no shortage of, of business. Okay, hearing none, then I think we did it. Very impressive, guys.
Yeah, very, very impressive. Good job.
Yeah.
I was, I was expecting like an 11:00 PM meeting.
I was too.
I know. When I read the minutes of the last meeting and remembered that the time of adjournment was 10:17 PM, I thought, oh, man.
I ate a snack for that reason, because I was like, if we're here till 11:00, it's gonna be a problem. No, but I, I appreciate everybody's, everybody's engagement. I know that we had a really massive meeting last month. But I think that's one of the reasons we were able to move through a lot of the stuff tonight relatively quickly. So thank you so much. And thank you to all the staff and to all of our consultants who joined us tonight. We really appreciate that. Okay, so if there's no additional business, then at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Our motion that we adjourn.
There you go.
Am I allowed to do that?
Yeah, so you're trustee. Yeah, absolutely.
I'll second that one.
Okay, moved in second. Any objections?
No, ma'am.
All right, hearing none, then we are adjourned at 8:33 PM. Thank you guys so much. Really.
Thank you so much. And welcome to our new board members.
Welcome so much. Glad to have you.
Thanks, everybody.